Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the regular meeting of the City of Southfield City Council for April 1st, 2003. Welcome, everyone. This is another historic meeting, first time that we've met with the City Center Advisory Board. So we'll do a dual role call, starting with City Council, Ms. Banks.
Thank you. Ms. Seymour, here. Mr. Long.
Here.
Mr. Lamb.
Yeah.
Mr. Frazier. Mr. Patkatsi is not present. Ms. Jordan, here. And Mr. Siver.
Here.
You have five members present.
Okay. Through the chair. Through the chair. Ms. Height.
Here.
Ms. Hassel.
Here.
Mr. Jawad.
Hi.
And then Mayor Lawrence.
Oh, here.
Ms. Goldman Center.
Here.
Mr. Peterson.
Here.
Mr. Strachan.
Here.
Mr. Swartman.
Here.
Mr. Gilnis.
Here.
We have a corner. Okay. Well, we were going to start this meeting, one of the reasons for a meeting is so that we can get better acquainted. Two weeks ago, we had a meeting with the Southfield Planning Commission and the zoning board of the field, and it actually took a full hour. We did rather lengthy introductions, but by the end of the meeting, I'm very glad that we did that, because we discovered that on our planning commission and our zoning board's appeals, although we've vetted the people and approved their appointment, we found out that they have lots of other skills, and it was a very good experience. So we're going to start this evening's meeting by going around the room to do an introduction. And I would like to ask that your introduction be a couple of minutes. You don't have to tell us your hat size, as Mr. Frazier was asking last time, but just a little bit about yourself and the skill set that you bring to either council or the City Center Advisory Board. So once again, I'm going to start with my left, with Mr. Charette.
Good evening. I'm Jim Charette, City Administrator. My skill sets are, I chase the numbers pretty well, and if I can't by now, shame on me. I've been with the city for thirty-eight years in the areas of finance, also in the insurance and risk management, and as a city administrator for six years. And we are working through a tough economic period at the city. We know that, but we're making progress. We will not see emergency situations here, and we're pleased to be there with this group because we know that there's great potential in the city center area. And I've become a lot more enamored with planning lately. I do have a chance to see Mr. Crowe's collection, which is rather impressive. He knows a lot about the Tigers and the Yankees. And so I have a renewed enthusiasm for what can be done in the city center area and that potential in the city to grow our tax base. That's the big challenge.
Good evening, everyone. Nancy Banks, City Clerk. I'm a lifelong Southfield resident. Born here, raised here, educated here, met my husband here, got married here, attend church here, proud parent of two beautiful children, Jonathan and Amanda. One is an LTU graduate, who major architecture civil engineer, and the other one is an Oakland University graduate as a nurse. I started my career in the city of Southfield, actually probably in nineteen seventy-one, but full-time nineteen seventy-three, trained under our first city clerk, Captain Henry, and was elected to the position of city clerk in nineteen ninety-nine. So Southfield is my home, and I love our big city.
Hi. If you don't know me, my name is Ken Peterson, and I am now in my second term as the-
Hit the push. Ah, right.
As I was about to say, my name is Ken Peterson. I'm now in my second term as the quote-unquote residential representative on the CCAB. I'm a twenty-year resident of Southfield, and for ten of those years, I've been president of Five Thousand Town Center. That's the three-hundred-and-fifty resident association housed in the thirty-three-story high-rise tower across the street. Our little Five Thousand Town Center city has an annual operating budget of more than one and a half million dollars. And since the recession, we've managed to avoid any assessment increases, and we've doubled our reserves since two thousand and eight, and we too are doing more with less. My education and experience is in business management. I've been a consultant throughout my professional career. My expertise is in strategic planning. By that I mean analyzing my client's current situation, creating alternative solution strategies, and predicting the outcomes, the results. In other words, more romantic words, building bridges to a better future, from a current state to a desired state. I have served over fifty clients in fifteen diverse industries. I have improved production efficiencies, and I've reduced product defects, and because many of my consulting projects have been marketing oriented, from launching new products to penetrating new markets, I have been heavily involved in the CCAB's recent selection and appointment of work-term communications as our PR marketing agency, and the launch of our website and social media initiatives. For 2013, the CCAB has vowed to be more proactive in bringing forward recommendations to build the economic vitality of the city center. So I'm looking forward to more contributions from the CCAB and from me. Over to you.
Good evening. My name's Hassan Jawad. You guys, many of you know me from the real estate developments and development real estate type projects, but many of you don't know that I actually started in Southfield. Officially, twenty years today, actually, April 1st was our twenty-year anniversary with Tower Computer Services, which is a IT-based company. We cater predominantly to corporate-based clientele. Our original offices were started in the town center, and twenty years back, we had a choice of choosing to go downtown Detroit and end up on the People Mover route, or to move to what was in zone that is the Prudential Town Center. We chose the Prudential Town Center because there was nothing like in the area. It was unique, and it was, it presented us an opportunity that did not exist anywhere else in the state in regards to location and concentration of businesses. As our company grew, we started looking for additional property in the area, and we actually ended up finding the site where the Jimmy Johnson CK Grill is currently located, which was a old two-story, bi-level building, which was in nineteen ninety-seven. And we moved our service facility and administrative staff to that building. And back then, there was still a Howard Johnson's with a swimming pool filled with concrete, and the Tim Hortons didn't exist, and there was a big empty field on the other side of Evergreen Road. The condominiums didn't exist, and it was very, very different than what it looks like now. We had a vision even then, I was convinced on Southfield then, I'm even more so convinced on Southfield now. We had this vision of developing our site, and we waited until the Esaclo project had taken off and saw that it was successful and ultimately followed suit, which leads us to where we're at today. The IT business has evolved into the real estate and development business, and as I said, we are, I say we, I say I, have grown the IT business to now we have thirteen employees, where we started with two in the early nineties, and it is still my mainstay. We do a lot of business with many different types of companies here in Southfield. We do a lot of work with Henry Ford Health Systems, a lot of work with various law firms, Ford Field, Rite Town Casinos. Our customer base is very diverse, but Southfield's been very, very good to us, given the allocation because of the great mix of businesses and companies that exist here, as well as the people. And we look forward to being here another twenty years and hopefully all be here too. Thank you.
My name is- Paul Goldman Center. I am the current Chair of the City Center Advisory Board. I think I missed the meeting in February. And actually, I've been running it up, but it wasn't a lot as I got through the motions. I am with Shell State Brothers. I last Wednesday celebrated thirty-five years with the company and in the business. That's pretty exciting for me. We were talking about some new computer systems the other day, and everybody was talking about how far computers have come, and I shared with them that they weren't computers when I started, so, and I was, I was, and I am the Director of the Commercial Properties, managing currently over a million square feet of mostly office property and one multi-mustria on the east side, most notably in the Southfield area. I was involved in the development and original management of First Center Office Plaza around Burke and Lasher. We no longer own that property, but that's very near and dear to my heart, and I currently manage the McAdie Center and oversee the leasing management of that property, which is over at the Civic Center and Northwestern Highways, and I start affiliation in the Southfield area. We're very excited about what is envisioned for the city center as business owners. We believe that it's important that we bring new business to the city, and we, you know, assistance in doing that, and we're hoping that this relationship helps us, I guess, in the future, and finding things that make things work.
My name's Kim Hassel. I live at the Southfield Town Center. I actually run a town center. So two owners, about sixteen years, started out in construction, and looking at way up into property management and now manage a little bit of that thing. Just wanted to show you, you can sit at the corner and be quiet and get the charge. I have worked basically my entire working life, minus two years in Southfield. I've lived in Southfield. Always ended up living north, but drive here every day. And I'm seeing it grow and develop, and I'd like to see more ground and development. I know my ownership needs to see more going on in the city, and we need to have more reasons for tenants to come here. We're moving out to other properties in other areas because we don't have enough to offer. Just the building itself isn't enough anymore. People want more. I'm convinced trying to do everything I can, trying to drive things out of my ownership as much as I can, but I love Southfield. And I'll stay here till I drive an update in the next year.
Good evening. My name's Linda Height. I'm the Vice President for Finance and Administration at Lawrence Technological University. I've been there almost ten years. I've had to spend the previous thirty years in the healthcare industry. My background is business management primarily, and I'm happy to represent Lawrence Tech and our almost four-five-hundred students with the City Center Advisory Board. I think there's a great partnership to be had, as our President, Dr. Lockville, says, since it's named after the mayor, Lawrence Tech is very merry to the city of Southfield, and we can only help each other, I think. Quick crack.
My name is Jim Gilis. I'm Executive Vice President and Director of Operations for Rediko, a company originally founded by Bob Saznik. I started as a CPA, spent many years as a banker here at American Federal Savings and Down the Street. Rediko built Trailers Tower, the first high-rise suburban office building, followed by a handful of buildings in Troy. We came back and developed, purchased the Hoover Networks building now, which was Bendix at that time, and developed Oakland Town Square and the Oakland Towns property and the American Cancer Society, and we also own American Center, which is the Charter One Building. So we have a great investment in the city. We've been here a long time. Look forward to staying here, but there are a number of things that we need help with as real estate people. Although I have some beautiful buildings, I have some directional challenges, can't get into some of the city, ask for people to know where it's located. So I need signage, I need help, and I think we need to develop a more pedestrian and interactive environment before Dan Gilbert moves everybody downtown. And I just saw his presentation Thursday, so he's got a big pocketbook, so we've got a lot to work against. But it's been very productive at City Center, and I think we've come a long way, and look forward to seeing the fruition of our efforts.
Good evening. My name's Josh Swartini. I work for Edkin. I'm the Vice President there, and I handle all of our development, leasing, construction, and build-outs for our properties across Southeast Michigan. We have two properties in the immediate area, one right across the road, Evergreen Atrium, and one on Civic Center that we call City Center. So we have a vested interest in the area. I've been working in Southfield for the last ten years at the company. Our headquarters are a little bit further north on Northwestern, but we are in Southfield. And, you know, I think I, in the last three to four months, I can honestly say that this area has probably been the high point of our portfolio across Southeast Michigan. Leasing has really picked up, but I think what we're striving to do in creating more walkable communities, more amenities and things like that are very important because you can only go so far with rate in your building, in the location of your building. Quickly, the negotiations turn to what else can you offer? And I think through our partnership and the discussions that we've been having with our board, we're trying to get there and do some of those things. And we're very interested in working with everybody around the table here to kind of take that to the next step. I think it's important that, to note that some of the other communities in the surrounding area are doing the same thing, so we're in a little bit of competition, which is good, but at the same time, you know, we need to make sure that we're on an equal playing field and we can go after some of the same things that they're trying to go after at this time. I think one of the other key ingredients to this that I'd like to, you know, really, really try to put a finger on and help push through is the commitment that we have for Evergreen Road. I see that as a big plus for the area and something that, with the dollars that are going to be spent, we need to make sure that our planning and our match dollars, both from a public-private standpoint, are really stretched to the utmost that we can, because I think it's a great opportunity to enhance the corridor and create some of these amenities that the other communities are striving for as well. Thank you.
My name is Jones Seymour. I'm council member. I moved to Southfield in nineteen seventy-three, lived in for forty years, and twenty of those years I worked in Southfield. In the Town Center building twice, and in the First Center building several years. With the same company then we moved to the Town Center, and for twenty of those years I worked in Southfield. So I have vested interests, I guess you could say. The year that the, I was elected to council nineteen ninety-four was when the First Center, I believe, was established, First Center, not First Center, City Center was established, at least I read that somewhere. So my background has been, most of it, in the automotive supplier industry and the technical standards. I dealt with all the states, several countries, and then having the equipment tested, seatbelt, helmets, motorcycle helmets, police helmets, all kinds of stuff for motorcycles, police cars, airplanes and passenger cars. And I was in charge of all of them, getting everything tested, making sure that everything was met. Kind of like a quality control, but it wasn't. But very, very interesting. I love the automotive supplier industry, it's fascinating. And that's pretty much all I can say. I'm very interested in the city center project. I've always been, since day one, it's been my primary concern. So anything we can do, I know we can do this in form, and I know we can and we will. So together, we'll succeed. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Sue Morawekowski. I'm the Deputy City Attorney for the City of Southfield. Worked here for over twenty-nine years, and obviously, we represent the city and promote whatever municipal law endeavors that the city is engaged in. A lot of what the planning department is involved in, we obviously get involved in as well. We work with Terry on the rezoning site plan, special uses, and we also have gotten somewhat involved on some of these plans early on, when there were easements that were necessary for the sidewalk, reconfigurations that were going on, and I know that there are issues with easements for the proposed roundabout. So I look forward to working with the City Center Board. I think it's a exciting project, and obviously, whatever participation our office can lend, we're happy to do that.
I'm not going to brag too much. I'm, as I said in the, well, at the beginning, I moved here in nineteen sixty-five. I built the floor couch on a farm in Tampa. I became involved in Vista for five years, and how I did that, I understood, and I found out that the school was destroying their books again, the very session. So I went up there, and I couldn't stand that destroying textbook. So I made a deal, and I took all that stuff, books for five years, wrote it in my garage, cataloged them, used the kids from Groves High School, and we sent it out to the Indians. The government supplied the cartons for me to do all this, and we sent it out to all the Indian reservations, we started libraries, we sent it out to all the veterans in South America and all of our work. Then I got interested in the city of Southfield, and I got onto commissions and ended up as on the Police and Fire Simple Service Commission for eight years. We did a good job managing the police fire team. Then they asked me to, police asked me to run for council, and the first time I lost. Then the next time, I kept winning. And I've been on council for thirty years already, so, and I'm still here. I was drafted into the Second World War. I'm still here. And I intend to be here. What more could I say? Five months ago, I appointed to the Oakland University Advisory Board, and the pet project there is women's rights. So we're working pretty hard for women's rights. And here I am. Welcome, everyone.
Thank you.
My name is Steph, and I'm with Palmeri Investment, Executive at Palmeri Investment. And just sitting here listening to everybody tell their story, I mean, there's such a diverse, you know, background and obviously, a lot of perspectives and passion for the city and love for the city, which is really why we're here. I think to have an open, honest discussion from stakeholders, you know, in the city, and really, the CCAB really represents called greater business community, and we've worked hard, and Terry's done a great job with the board to, I think, put together not only a larger vision, but to talk about pragmatic steps kind of balanced by business community's input. You know, if we're talking about the city center, that's been something that has been talked about for too long. So I think, you know, my hope today is to have that pragmatic discussions about, one, where we are. I think, you know, Terry's done a nice job, and he'll present some things about that perspective. And I think some, again, some real logical steps that take into account the realities, the physical realities of where we are, and try to put in motion a plan that we can all feel good about.
I'm your mayor, Linda Lawrence. I know all of you, and I just wanted to say thank you, first of all. I see you coming in the morning to your meetings, and I know that there, you all are very busy and have really important roles in your company, and we have come a long way, and I just want to thank you for your investment and your time. It's a win-win for both of us, because if the city center wins, the city of Southfield wins. So I appreciate you being here. I'm your mayor, I've been the mayor now for twelve years. This is my thirteenth year. I'm up for reelection. I served at the school board, City Council, prior to coming to, to the position of mayor. I've served on a number of boards throughout the community and leadership roles. It is very important, the job that you have now. The city of Southfield was developed, we are over fifty years old now. It was developed from a cornfield, and we were the hottest thing going. We were the first to develop an urban suburban area, is the label that we have now. But as you said to Alex, we are now in competition. We're aging. We have big pockets going down, down the road from us in the south, and we have green space going for them in the north. And so here we sit, a developed community that must redevelop itself, and the responsibility and the oath that you take for the city is extremely high. I can tell you that when I look at the, the plan and the vision, and I also want to say that our city planner, I'm very excited about him as well, because he gets it, and the vision that we need to keep moving forward is extremely important. Things are looking better. I was just hearing Steph on, I said, how are things going? She said, feels better. He said, yeah, it feels better, but it's not better yet. And so we both agree, to get us there, we're going to have to start feeling better. We're going to have to get that internal energy, because all of us have experience around this table. We know what it takes to fight, and collectively, we just need to feel better about it, get a vision, and make things happen. So I just want to say thank you, and it's an honor being your mayor. I only claim the things I've been mayor forty-one years.
It's your only place to be. My name is Marion Frazier, and I'm a City Council member. My home is, I originated from Kalamazoo, but I've lived, because of my job, I've lived from coast to coast to the lower part of the state, other than Benton Harbor when hail waves were coming up on the beach before they put the lake trout in and steelhead. And I moved to Southfield in nineteen eighty, my family, and immediately became invested in Southfield by doing volunteer work in, with my homeowners' association, and then with the city of Southfield. And in nineteen ninety-two, I was appointed to the City Council, and I ran, thought the only thing you had to do was put up a couple of signs, and everybody would recognize that I'd done a good job, but there's a lot more to it, so I didn't win. I have a distinction, I don't know if it's a unique distinction, but I have a distinction of being appointed to the City Council twice, and then I finally figured out how to get a- And then I finally figured out how to get elected, and I've been on council for, since then. I do a lot of volunteer work in the, in the community, I'm on boards, yeah, probably the most normal board that I sit on is the Colorado's Catcher Board. And I've been on that board for a long time. And, but I do sit on the Executive Service Corps, Common Ground, I'm on their board, and a number of other boards that help make the community a better place. And I have the distinction of having a couple of daughters that graduated from Southfield, I have a couple of grandsons that graduated from, from Southfield Lake Trout, and they're all doing very well. Our oldest daughter is the CFO of the law school, Michigan, University of Michigan Law School. She was recruited by them, she was the assistant dean of the law school at Berkeley in California. And our other daughter is a school teacher. Our son works for the post office, and he figures out all the routes for all of the mail deliveries in, in this area. So, and our fourth son is, he retired from the military after twenty years, he lives in New York, Arizona, so. He was really part of our family, and, and I've been married to be three years. But I'm older than friends.
I'm Jeremy Moss. I, I'm a sad Spartan, sitting next to a very proud person from Syracuse right now, so it's a little difficult. But I, I went to Michigan State, I studied journalism and political science, and took a race relations study abroad to South Africa. While at Michigan State, I took up an internship just four miles down the street from my campus, in the state capital, for state rep Paul Candino. I kind of got my feet wet in politics and its effect on Southfield. Graduated from Michigan State in journalism and political science in two thousand and eight, worked on numerous campaigns for the mayor, worked for, for four years, and I think on both ends that was enough. So, ended up working in, in the office of state representative Rudy Hobbs as his district director. And just recently, and was flattered by an article in the Southfield Sun, was accepted into Michigan Political Leadership Program, which is a political fellowship, political training, it's bipartisan, twelve Republicans, twelve Democrats, twelve women, twelve men, fellowship that takes us all throughout the state throughout the course of the year. So our next trip is to Rock Common. Learning different things, tools that I'm going to put in my toolbox to become a, an effective public servant for Southfield. I am a third-generation Southfielder. My parents, I still live in the city, my grandparents were original homeowners here in Southfield, so I'm a lifelong resident. I, I'll tell, I was elected to city council in two thousand and eleven, so I'm serving a four-year term. I'll tell a quick relevance story. I have a group of friends that just went to Chicago this past weekend, they celebrated a friend's twenty-fifth birthday. And for, for a few of them, it was their first time in Chicago. And they came back yesterday, and one of my friends was texting me, you know, "I want to move to Chicago now, you know, I live in this area, I work in Southfield, I want to move to Chicago." And I don't think that's atypical for, for people in my age bracket. I have friends from college who live in Denver, Los Angeles, Charleston, South Carolina, Washington DC. And then on the other end of the spectrum, I have friends who live in Troy, and Macomb County, and Royal Oak, who work in Southfield. So I think that there's a way for this city and its huge business base to attract young talents to want to live in Southfield. There's a group that works in Southfield that doesn't live in Southfield. There's a group that wants to live somewhere cool and doesn't see that in Southfield. And I think the one area in our city that has that potential is the city center area. I don't do it out of neglect, because the other Southfield residents, my parents are Southfield residents, homeowners, so I don't, I don't, I, I, you know, they're tax-paying residents too, I give them as much attention as I would give anyone who's a resident of this city. But I think a focus of mine is definitely on the city center. How can we expand it? How can we give it the infrastructure it needs to be competitive, to be a place to work and live for people my generation?
Good evening, Terry Crowe, city planner. I just got done some notes. I think before I knew I wanted to be a landscape architect or a planner, I was shaped by the environment that I grew up in. My family's from the west side of Buffalo. I had four generations of family that never lived or worked more than a few blocks from each other. So it was a very walkable, bikeable community. And God forbid, my dad was relocated to Syracuse, a hundred and twenty miles away, and I was going to move to the moon, as far as my grandmother was concerned. My parents bought a house in the Syracuse University neighborhood and had lived there for over twenty years. They were whole bodies. Our vacations were six miles outside of the city at a state park, but we traveled back to Buffalo. They never left New York State until I, after I was nineteen. And then I went to Syracuse University, go orange, and had the opportunity on the landscape architecture program to travel, to the east coast extensively, and visit all the major cities. And then in my fifth year, I spent four wonderful months in Wimbledon, London, on an independent study, and I walked, I took mass transit the entire four times. And it wasn't until ninety-four, when I moved to this auto-dominated metro Detroit, that I realized that you needed a car to get around. I didn't get my driver's license until I was after nineteen, I never needed to. And so I think that, you could tell from my passion about walking and pathways, and I've said pathways not only connect places, but they connect people too. And I think we have the potential here in the city center to make a more walkable, pedestrian-friendly, and build upon all the great things that we have. And I'll be talking a little bit more about that in a couple of moments.
Thank you. My name is Sylvia Jordan. I'm an undergrad, did my undergrad at Michigan State University, so as Jeremy and I were talking, we had a tough weekend, but that's okay, we'll survive and look for next year. I've done graduate studies at Oakland University. I've lived here in Southfield for twenty-six years. My husband and I pastor a church right next to the pancake house. It's called Family Victory Fellowship, so we have a lot of members in this community. We also have a school and a preschool here. My husband is a graduate of Lawrence Tech with a degree in architecture, but I was elected to city council in nineteen ninety-seven. And the very next year, I became city administrator, Bob Block. He took approval of us council post to Weston, Virginia. And he wanted us to look at that, to get a vision for the city center. And I've always held that vision of what Southfield could become, you know, right across the street. So that's where I'm at, I'm committed to the city center. All of these plans that are here, anyone would work, in my opinion. Anyone will fit our city. I think the key is, we've got a baker for our kitchen. What can we do that could scale down and fit the plans that we have across the street? Or what could fit that, that landscape? I'm just committed to the city, I love the city. I have two children, two adult children, and as I said last time, they're both dating individuals, and marriage may be in the plan, so I'm excited about that. But one thing I didn't say is I'm a concussion, but it's something that people don't know about.
I didn't know. I know you're banging drums.
Yeah.
Well, I'm Ken Seiger. I grew up outside of New York City, and I was recruited by Oakland University. They wanted a more cosmopolitan student body, they didn't want to be a commuter school. So this was back in the sixties, when Michelle Wilson was still alive, and I actually worked for her very briefly as a student. In nineteen sixty-seven, I moved to Southfield. I was hired by Southfield Public Schools to be a journalism, yearbook, or, well, I do yearbooks, news papers, journalism teacher, English teacher, American history teacher. And I served at Southfield Public Schools forty-five years as a teacher and administrator. Like Myron, after I moved here, I got invested in the, the community, started a number of projects on the environment, recycling, I got involved in my neighborhood association, which I've been on the board for over forty years now. And charter member of the Martin's, became task force of the Parks and Gardens Historic Society. I'm a history buff, I've written three books on Southfield, and I was elected to council in, in two thousand and one. Currently, one of my passions is architecture, and we are organizing a mid-century modern bus tour of Southfield for the end of June, June twenty-ninth, to promote our, our business and our buildings, and hopefully find adaptive reuse for those that are in need of that. And to Jim, I would like to thank you very personally for introducing me to gastronomy last June, I believe it was. I'm a regular there, I eat there about once a week now, and I think of you when I... That's very tasty. I've never had anything on the menu there that is, is off, it's an excellent restaurant I'm very glad that you were able to, or Redico was able to attract that restaurant to our repertoire of, it places Dean in Southfield. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Crowe at this point. I'm going to move.
Jeff?
[inaudible]
Is that office fifty minutes ago? You may like to go there fifty minutes. I don't think so. Open town time. You should straighten out that way, but it would be your clothes washing.
[inaudible]
Gastronome, that is the current restaurant that's in there. I have not, I can't afford a hundred dollar bill.
Good evening. What I'm going to do is just do a brief overview of...
You are, Evan.
[bell ringing] I know. An overview of what the board has been working on, and talk about some of their vision. As you know, Southfield is the first-rate suburb of Detroit, coined the city of it all. It was primarily built in the auto-dominated nineteen sixties, post-World War II, has a resident population of about seventy-two thousand people, and a daytime population of a hundred and seventy-five thousand. The city as a whole has twenty-seven million square feet of office space, highly diverse Fortune 500 companies, and is a proud home of Lawrence Tech University, OCC community, Southfield campus, and many other universities and business annexes. Some of our challenges being a first-rate suburb is that we are auto-dominated. We have many freeways and highways that dissect our community. We're built on a suburban land use model. We have a lack of pedestrian connectivity, and we don't have any traditional downtown retail center. Although we were the first enclosed mall in the country, Northland Mall. The DDA was established in nineteen ninety-five, and the city center special assessment district was established in ninety-four. I've often used this analogy before. Industry is to locate where natural resources were located, or major transportation networks such as rivers and railroads. And people came to the cities for employment base. Today, the natural resources are human capital. It's the young professionals, the creative class. And kids that are graduating today are choosing to live in a place they want to live, and then look for a job. And we have to understand that as we try to move from this suburban land use model to still be competitive. Now, I'm not going to go through all these design elements, but placemaking is based on, on having that human connection and building that sense of community and a sense of place. Also, great streets, if you look at great streets throughout the world, they have half a dozen or so common elements. And Mr. Scherratt has coined Evergreen Road is the magnificent mile, and we think that we can make Evergreen Road a, a great street as well. Today, you can't do anything anymore without talking about sustainability, whether it's economic sustainability, environmental sustainability, or social sustainability. So we try to work, work those three elements in all of our visions and plans. Now, the city has, working together, the council, the planning department, other departments, and boards and commissions, we have established a lot of the planning tools recently. The comprehensive master plan was adopted in two thousand and nine, and is in the process of being updated over the next twelve months. We adopted low-impact design manual, our engineering department, our stormwater management, and our planning department are trying to make sure that each site plan incorporates low-impact design. Council approved the bike parking credit in November two thousand and eleven. We have approved about forty different sites since that was implemented, over half of them have already installed bike parking, as well as making the connections from the public sidewalk to the main entrance. The council adopted non-motorized pathway and public transit plan as an umbrella for the entire city. As part of that implementation, was a focus on the city center and the DDA districts, and shortly, we will be bringing forward those plans, those specific plans, to the planning commission and city council for their endorsement as well. And we've, based on the Sarah Chevrolet, that wanted to install our first wind turbines in the city, we adopted sustainable energy regulations to deal with both solar energy and the wind energy. So we're on the forefront on a number of these issues. Continuing, Lawrence Tech established a Masters of Urban Design program in the fall of two thousand and ten. We've had seven of their interns working with our department, helping us do some additional work, including the state award-winning Student Project Mid-Century Modern Design Guidelines, which is an asset that we would like to promote. Cities of Phoenix, Kansas City, and Miami have all adopted and embraced their mid-century modern architecture, and we hope to do that as well in the city of Southfield. The PACE program, I think, is big, especially when many of our building infrastructure are fifteen, sixty years old, and the PACE program is going to help retrofit and revitalize old, tired buildings. We've, working with the city planning department, the city center, we have twenty-four-seven web access. The Overlake Development District was recently enacted by the city council, and I think this is going to be a valuable tool for redevelopment, especially in the city center. But just for those who may not be familiar, in ninety-four, the special assessment district or principal shopping district was established along these lines. And two years ago, when we were up for a three-year enactment, Lawrence Tech University said we want to be partners, we want to, we want to be stronger, build a bridge between the university and the community, and we extended the boundaries to include Lawrence Tech. So as I mentioned, the city center was established in ninety-four as a principal shopping district. We collect two cents per square foot of non-residential, it generates about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year. Most of our district is within a half a mile radius or a ten-minute walk for the average American. Lawrence Tech, as I mentioned, was added, they have the equivalent of about four thousand full-time equivalent students and eight hundred full-time equivalent staff and faculty. They're moving from a more traditional commuter school to a full-service university, and therefore, they added sports teams for the first time in forty years, I believe. Linda, you have now about ten varsity sports. And they're requiring their students who receive scholarships to live on campus. They were approved by the city council in the fall of two thousand and eleven for a hundred and fifty-one-bed freshman dorm that was put on hold slightly because of the economic down... staff and faculty. They're moving from a more traditional commuter school to a full-service university, and therefore they added sports teams for the first time in 40 years. I believe, Linda, you have now about 10 varsity sports. And they're requiring their students who receive scholarships to live on campus. They were approved by the city council in the fall of 2011 for 151-bed freshman dorm that was put on hold slightly because of the economic downturn, but we're hopeful that they'll be breaking ground hopefully in the next year or two. And they have worked with some off-campus housing opportunities that we'll talk a little bit about, which, when completed, will put another 171-bed for young professionals and students living in our city center 24/7 and creating that pedestrian environment. We also have five other business schools and university annexes that bring people in at night and on the weekend. This is just showing the concept of the freshman dorm with a connection to Civic Center Drive, making that pedestrian a connection to the main campus. And this is a rendering of the dorm that was approved by the council. And we, as the board, in responding to the needs of the business community, refocused our strategies into a three-pronged approach: marketing and branding, special events, and urban design and concept vision. One of the first things we did, and the council has seen a presentation by Bob Gibbs, he prepared a retail and hotel marketing analysis in January 2012. As part of our branding, we adopted a new logo in April of 2012 and established a website. We hired a marketing and public relations firm, More Print Communication, in 2012, and they helped us establish the social media. We're using Facebook and Twitter to appeal to the young professionals, and our attendance at our special events has quadrupled because of that. And we also hired a professional photographer, Bill Rauchhauser, who has chronicized urban living in Detroit for the past 40 to 50 years. He's a resident of this area and wanted to partner with us. Now, Gibbs' retail and hotel marketing analysis established that there are 13,000 daytime workers within a 10-minute walk in radius or within the city center. There are 45,000 additional daytime workers within a five-minute drive. And that the primary trade area based on retail market analysis is a half a million people. And because Southfield enjoys easy access, these are all potential consumers. This is just some of the marketing and branding that we've been able to accomplish in the last two years. Now, if you boil it down, his hotel market analysis basically says that every office worker supports nine additional square feet of retail because of their disposable income. And looking at office workers within our district and within our trade area, we have the potential to support 645,000 square feet of mixed-use retail. Not necessarily all in the city center district, but there's a gap if you look at market and trade area. Even if we were to get a fraction of that, that's substantial. We use that market analysis as a basis for developing our vision. We also identified the potential for a boutique hotel, three-and-a-half-star hotel in this area. We continue to support special events such as the Eat to the Beat summer concerts, but we've expanded it from just offering it in the summer, working with the Southfield Area Chamber of Commerce, the Young Professionals, the Engineering Society of Detroit. We have special events throughout the year, both during the day and in the evening, and we have expanded our outreach and our networking. We've supported the face-to-face art exhibit. We partnered with Lawrence Tech in the fall and sponsored four... We had a four-mile run in dog walk throughout the city center district, and dozens of people said that they didn't even realize there's, you know, this part of the city within walking distance. I think the International Festival... I think the things like the International Festival, and maybe the... Mr. Juad and myself attended Lawrence Tech's kickoff on their Global Village project. They are increasing in the number of outstate, out-of-state, and international students. And we were there at their kickoff, probably 100 or plus international students. And they're inviting their family and friends to come in August for a two-week period to visit Southfield, live, stay, and experience the full Lawrence Tech University experience as well as Metro Detroit. And it's a great opportunity for us to welcome them in the city and hopefully encourage them to either move or invest their businesses and so forth. These are just some examples of different events, special events that we have co-sponsored. And then something that's near to my heart is the urban design and concept vision some of the boards are showing here. Long-term mixed-use vision, creating gateways to establish boundaries within the district. Of course, making it more pedestrian-friendly with more pedestrian amenities. The banners and flags help with the branding. The pathways and public transit, partnering with Smart. We've had over $100,000 of transit facility upgrades in the district alone in the last year and a half. Office conversion to student housing is an opportunity to take adaptive reuse of older buildings and give them new life. And, you know, one of the projects that's been talked about is creating a front lawn pathway to get people on the street. Arborloss, again, I think this is one of the great success stories. It's formerly known as the Civic Plaza, 110,000-square-foot, four-story office building that was over 80% vacant. When the owners came to our office and said, "We would like to gut this and create office storage in here," we said, "This doesn't fit our vision." And we showed them all the concept plan. And they said, "Oh, okay, I see you have a vision, and we're going to take a second look at this." And they went out and looked at the market and identified the need for law departments for urban professionals and students. And they're working on a partnership with Lawrence Tech to handle some overflow. But they also are marketing to Wayne State students. They're marketing to residents at St. John Providence Hospital. And they're marketing to other urban professionals who want a different style of living. And last I heard, they're over 40% leased up, and they hope to have kids start moving in in August of this year. So put people on the street, put people purchasing groceries and so forth in our community. And this is just a rendering of what it would look like from the exterior. This project is moving forward to the point where they feel comfortable they'd like to do a 10,000-square-foot out parcel development right at the corner of Central Park Boulevard and Civic Center. Cafe, cafe, coffee shop, maybe a Gilbert Studio, and outdoor seating. Again, starting to build that concept vision. Working with Studio CI and the market analysis, we developed a long-term 20-year plan for buildout, which includes some of the boards' visions that the council has seen before. And I think what's important is that the partnerships. There's three public works projects that were on the design order in various stages of implementation, one being the Civic Center resurfacing from Evergreen Road to Northwestern Highway. The city center said, "Here's an opportunity for us to partner with the city." Since it was being primarily funded from state and federal dollars, we were getting 80 cents on the dollar, and the city center put up $40,000 to put decorative crosswalks there. And so there's the vision of the decorative crosswalks, and they were implemented, and it was a win-win situation for the city and the district. Also, the magnificent mile. We have a full-scale drawing over there after the meeting. If you get a chance, you want to see some concepts that Mary Karlo prepared. But on the book for 2014, $5.5 million federally funded project, the city match is about 1.2 million. That'll get us a resurfaced road with proper drainage and infrastructure and a landscape median. But what we're hoping to do to make it truly a magnificent mile is potentially another $3.5 million of enhancements: landscaping, bioswales, mid-block crossing, pedestrian amenities, decorative lighting, and all the bells and whistles. And we're in the process of applying for a number of grants for that project as well. The roundabouts, which helps with traffic safety and traffic calming, gives the city the ability to close off between the entrance, the southern entrance to municipal complex and the northern entrance to the library for festivals and events. This mid-block pedestrian crossing can become a plaza. You could set up, similar to the carnivals and other exhibits, art festivals and ice sculptures and so forth, and still allow for a free flow of traffic in and out of the district. So some of the public works projects, we've already talked about the city center road. We're working towards doing cost estimating for the front lawn loop and then Evergreen Road in 2014. And I know I've heard from our business community that this is vitally important for the attraction and retention of young professionals and business tenants. We're competing against Ferndale and Royal Oak in Birmingham. We don't have a traditional downtown, but we certainly can make it more pedestrian-friendly and give more destinations for people to go to. Again, in concept, the front lawn loop, two and a half times around would be a mile. It also provides accessibility for the major events that the city sponsors throughout the year. This is a concept drawing of creating this pedestrian-scale, mixed-use environment. We're looking north at the whole building with the landscape median, pedestrian crosswalks, LED lighting, bioswales, and a streetscape. This is the corner that Arborloss is talking about building a 10,000-square-foot retail building and helping to establish this new streetscape. This is looking at the existing Civic Center plaza with the flags. These are in the exact location. If we were to create a new east-west pedestrian-friendly access road, we could have future mixed-use development. Again, this is long-term, but these long-term visions help us when developers come into our office and they talk about what's happening in the district and seeing, you know, the greater of the whole. And then, again, looking long-term, Civic Center Bridge, creating an urban plaza similar to what's at Over 696, and bridging that gap from the northern end of Lawrence Tech campus into the city center district. Again, this is actually long-term. This could be possibly a university building annex to put classrooms, student dormitory, a green roof, more closer into the district. This is working with Oakland, Oakwood Commons, potential Galleria development. This is working with other market analysis of what possibly could happen long-term in the district. As I stated, one of the first partnerships that we had with Lawrence Tech is creating this gateway. Lawrence Tech said, "We'd like to get more visibility from our northern end, kind of the back of our campus. We'd like to spruce it up." We partnered with them and provided technical assistance and seed money, and were able to match three to one the dollars that were put in to create this pedestrian-friendly gateway and connect our bike path that actually is dead-ended. Long-term, we hope to take, extend this bike path into the campus and physically connect the students to the city center. Because we were working on this gateway, Eden Corp. said, "We'd like to partner with you," and on their own dime came in and put substantial landscaping to match Lawrence Tech. And we're currently working with the McAfee Center on creating a gateway pedestrian entrance on their corner. And Oakwood Commons has upgraded their signage, incorporated the city center logo, and long-term have plans on upgrading the gateway. Again, some of these concept plans can become reality when you partner and leverage dollars. And this is a concept of Evergreen Road at 10 Mile and Northwestern Highway, creating a gateway entrance. And we've incorporated this concept design into the overall redevelopment of Evergreen Road. We also said, "Let's see some of the low-hanging fruit that we can work on." So we established a streetscape and pedestrian palette of furnishings and partnering with Smart, working with available city center dollars. We were able to incorporate seven new bus shelters, six new bike racks, a dozen new benches and trash receptacles of last year, and we have another phase of that proposed for this year. And these are some of the examples of things that were installed, including the decorative crosswalks. Here's a great shot from 5,000 dollars showing the impact of these crosswalks. We also extended the landscape medias to provide these pedestrian safe harbors, ADA compliance with signalized pedestrian crosswalks. And now a pedestrian can cross too late to traffic, wait until it's safe, and then continue to cross. This is the corner where the proposed Arborloss retail development can start taking shape. Examples of the Lawrence Tech gateway, as well as Eden Corp. landscaping, Oakland Commons incorporated the city center logo, conceptual plans for the McAfee's corner. And last year, we were able to install over 1,500 linear speed of new bike paths and sidewalks in the district, filling in gaps that previously existed. This is just a list of some of the pedestrian amenities that were installed with city center funding. And this shows kind of the detail of the layout over here on the table of what we're working towards as far as creating a dynamic, walkable, and pothole-ridden, well-drained Evergreen Road from 10 Mile to 696. And I can't tell you how many times developers ask me, "When is it going to be built?" "We'd like to come in right on the heels of when it's being built. We don't want to start construction before it's built. We know this is vitally important to the economic recovery of this area. We're very excited about it. When are you going to put shovel to the ground?" We also have, with the overlay development district recently being adopted, we have a proposed two-story mixed-use development on the old People's State Bank site, just north of the Just Bank Jim Johns Plaza. And the council and planning commission will be seeing some plans on that very shortly. Again, these don't read all that well, but this shows you the story, story and a half of retail that's being proposed at Arborloss. And one of the things that's very exciting, Lawrence Tech University just announced that Alfred Toddman provided an $11 million challenge grant for a new biomedical engineering facility on their campus. And this is one of the architect's renderings. And, correct me if I'm wrong, Linda, if I say anything wrong, but I understand Alfred Toddman put up a million dollars for soft engineering and design. We've hired Albert Kahn as the lead architect. But they also, he made, one of his conditions was, "I want a world-renowned architect working on this. We want to create that Gary Guggenheim architecture that is world-renowned. As Dr. Maggo said, 'There's no great city without a great university. You need some great buildings, and this will help with the fundraising.'" Overall, it's a $55 million project. Phase one is about 30,000 to 50,000, which will bridge the existing engineering and science building. Long-term, if they completely build out, there's two other phases of about 50,000 square feet, which will start bridging the ravine and extending the campus out to the grocery. And I think, if nothing else, the fact that we have this website and we're keeping the website updated with current events, with what's happening with our business community at Lawrence Tech, and showing our mission and our vision. We track it with Google Analytics, so we see the results, and they're continuing to trend upward. And with this 24/7 access, we're amazed at some of the international hits that we get, some of which might be just students who are living here that have an international web address. But it also is, when I first Googled Southfield City Center two years ago, nothing came up. I got the city center in Houston, Texas. I got the city center in many of the cities in Europe. But now, when you Google Southfield City Center, mission page comes up, the webpage comes up because they get enough hits, and we've kind of risen to the top. So we've been very successful using new technology. So we've been very successful using new technology and appealing to young professionals to get our name out there. And that's my kind of overview of what the board's been working on. And I know some of the presidents wanted to open up the discussion. And I would just ask, I know Mr. Sworini has to leave a little bit early.
No, I'm good.
You're good?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
Well, I think I speak for the, to a person, for the entire council that we are really excited about this and we really, we all want it. So there's, I don't think, we don't really agree on everything, but city center is one thing that we're all excited about and want. I will take some comments from council members first and then we'll open it up to everyone. Mr. Lamb?
Yes. Okay. I agree. The vision is beautiful. And I agree with every, I agree with the vision of Terry's code, but I have one question. We could have begun this a little while ago. And council, why did you turn down Wal-Mart when it could have been a part of this all year? Think about what we did. I hope this goes forward, but we could have gone forward very, very quickly with Wal-Mart in the city. That's all I'm going to say.
Other council members, there's more?
Yeah, I'm curious. This is the third iteration of the city center complex. We had one back after that trip to, as Tony was talking about, because I was on that trip too, when we went to Aspen, Virginia and saw that plan. And we had a plan similar to that. Then we had a plan done in conjunction with LTU's design studio. That was the second one. This is the third one. Who's plan, who has done this plan? It's not clear to me. I guess that's for Terry. Did it disappear? I'm curious to know who designed this.
C3 from Lawrence Tech, C3 was part of the...
What is C3?
C3 is the, what do we call it officially? The question was, who designed it?
This is, Terry, I was saying this, this is the third iteration of the design for the city center. And I asked, "Who designed it?" And if I was answering, C3, and I don't understand who they are.
They're a collaborative professional firm, Studio CI.
Oh, CI.
They work out of Lawrence Tech. Their primary lead is a professor that has an active practice and they utilize grad students as a working professional practice. And so we work with them because they're located in the district and they had a good resume of this type of work.
Okay, so they're part of, or still you're with LTU? All right, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, I have one question. I think it was to Kim. She said that there, you need more reasons for people to come here. Can you explain that a little more? Or what you're hearing? You know, what are you hearing on this?
What I'm hearing is that we have potential tenants come and they look around. And at five o'clock, the sidewalks roll up and nobody can, there's no place to go. I've had people come in from out of town from my own company, panicked because they're trapped in the hotel. There's no place to go. They don't have a car.
There's no shopping.
There's nothing. There's no, there's no shopping. There's no, I mean, there's the restaurant in the hotel, there's the Skyline Club, and then there's the fast food that they don't walk to. That's about it. There's no nightlife. There's no shopping. Unless you've had the hotel gift shop, which doesn't have a whole lot.
I would have that.
And I've been hearing this for, you know, five years. You know, people coming in, come out of town. And now they're coming in the venue in cars and they're burning it. It's not what we want. We want them staying here because then they'll have all reason, you know, other people to come here. I'm losing tenants to Birmingham because employees want to be able to, I mean, lunch hour, run down, go down the street, do this, do that, be able to walk around. When they get off work, go down to the corner, have a couple beers, maybe then go take a show and then go home at nine, 10 o'clock. Get back.
Yeah, I see one of the most unique statistics that Terry mentioned in his presentation is there are, I think, 75, I've got this right, 75,000 residents in the city and 175,000 workers in the city. Is that correct? So daily, nightly, we are losing 100,000 people to the suburbs. They don't stay here in Southfield. And I think that's what Kim is describing and that's what we see. We're a great central location. Southfield has a tremendous amount to offer. I, in my present, in my introduction, I failed to say that I grew up in Detroit, but I spent my academic college years living in Southfield for probably 10, 15 years before I moved out to the suburbs. And there just was, you know, everything we did was outside of the city in today's happens again. So it's 100,000 people that leave the city that could very easily stay here if there were the facilities and the entertainment and the business opportunities, the retail opportunities to keep those people here. Birmingham is a great place to go on the weekend and Northfield is a great place to go on the weekend. And now Ferndale and Royal Oak are tremendous, great, exciting places to build on the weekends. And Southfield doesn't have that. And it should. Southfield should. We're located, perfectly located compared to those other cities, but we haven't taken that step forward in the city.
I guess that's what I'm hearing as a challenge. Because we know we're a great city. We know we've got the 175,000 daytime population. I guess my concern is the city of Southfield is limited in what we can do. And so what, what can developers do to help us out? What can we, how can we present ourselves to large businesses, small businesses, developers to come here and choose Southfield for their business? Because when you look at our demographics, you know, I know Mr. Lamb mentioned Walmart. When they did a presentation to us, they mentioned the demographics that we offer in terms of the income of our city, the spending money that we have. So aren't those numbers good enough? I mean, we've got to be real honest. Are they good enough for the large developers or do we need to go after small developers? Do we need to go after mom pop operations? Do we need to, what do we need to do to really make the city center happen? I guess we, you know, we've talked about it enough. What basic steps can we take to see it come to pass? I know Mr. Cole mentioned the low-hanging fruit, which is the benches and, you know, the payers. But what else can we do to make it happen?
If I can answer that, just with respect for the Walmart situation, there has to be a starting point. We have to start somewhere. And, you know, I wasn't involved in all the discussions and the politics of Walmart coming to Southfield, but I'm familiar with it. And that could have been a starting stepping stone for that business. That Walmart development, I worked for Show State Brothers and they have a restaurant division that now owns some Applebee's. And I think the council sent a letter indicating that they were considering being on that, you know, but also coming to the city as a result of this. That would have brought you a Walmart, whatever, you know, department store and would have brought you a family restaurant business that's a national business, would have been right at your corner. And from that, you know, business will spawn. You know, you build it and they will come. And that's our philosophy. From a developer's standpoint, obviously, we have to attract the tenants to the building. Our struggle was attracting tenants to our property. And that's a difficult process just because of the economy and the variety of things. But I guess, and I can belabor this, again, I think we have to start somewhere. That seemed a great opportunity and I don't know that, that the people involved in making the decision not to accept that were thinking in that broad sense. And I think we have to do more of that. And that's what I'm...
And I just want to, I know Walmart is behind us, but I actually spoke with a developer that lives in the B.C. area and he said, "Well, it's so good that you didn't take Walmart because some developers will come if you've got Walmart in the city." So there really are two sides to any corner. Walmart is behind us. So what can we do moving forward to really help our city? And that's my only question. What can we do to really make this city...
Very simply, you've got to do exactly what Dan Gilbert's trying to do. And you have to create, remember those 175,000 people come into our buildings, they leave. So you've got to say, "You don't leave. You live here and you shop here and you stay here. So you walk to work and you don't drive to work." So what do you do? You build multi-mixed use buildings that are retail downstairs, maybe a little bit office and then residential on top. And you've got to fill up Evergreen and you've got to fill up the city center and you've got to create a mass of people. And so you then create a mass of pedestrians and then you have a city and then you have a city center. That's what you've got to do.
Can we do it?
Sure. Bring your checkbook, we're going to do it.
You know, one of the things that, you're next, but I think of one of the things that Reddick has done with the Oakentown Square Building. It seems to me it's not enough anymore just to have a nice business address, a nice building. People are looking for amenities. So I noticed that you've added a health club to your building. You have a car wash in the garage. You attracted a great restaurant. I'm not sure what else you've done, but...
Campus center and multipurpose rooms that are used by people in the community and people who are our tenants, boardroom eating areas. Whether they use it or not, the tenants see it and they want to see that they're...
It's a plus for your address. So... Hassan?
I wanted to address a couple of the questions that were asked from a developer's standpoint. One of the biggest concerns that we see in regards to attracting various national tenants and so forth to this corridor is everyone always says, "Well, why isn't there a pair of, why isn't there a Dairy Queen? Why isn't this here? Why didn't you bring this here?" First and foremost, they have to want to come here first. And that's most important. One of the biggest concerns about coming to this corridor is, is there enough daytime population to sustain their business? Because there's a lack of business in evening hours and on the weekends. And so the biggest concern from these types of establishments is, is there enough daytime business to sustain their life? That is what the biggest challenge is. And if you pay attention to some of the establishments that are in the Evergreen corridor currently, they're closing at eight o'clock. You have, outside of Tim Hortons, you have a Big V Coffee Shop that closes very early and that should be a place that people are gathering and hanging out in the evenings and instead they're closing early. I don't want to dig up old ones, but I will make a couple of comments regarding the Walmart and Paul had mentioned, you know, the potential Applebee's that could have followed in and so forth. And if we recall, Golden Corral was also there. But we also had some businesses who were interested in, who were going to be moved out when Walmart came, who were interested in coming to the city center corridor. I don't want to necessarily name who they are, but there was a trickle-down effect that was going to occur for that surrounding area as well as bringing additional businesses and tenants to this area that did not happen. That's done. What can we do now? We've all seen variations of exciting concept plans and we say, "Boy, these are really nice. We get excited. We like the way they look." And what do we necessarily need to do to get them started? We don't have the deep pockets that Dan Gilbert has. So I don't know that we can just build it and hope to God that people will show up. I am proud to say that the city center advisory board has had many accomplishments over the past two years with a very minimal amount of funds that we have been working with. We are the Southfield City Center, but we are not the DDA and nor do we have the money that the DDA has, even though the city center was established before the DDA was established. So back to the question, where do we start? How do we get this going? What are some of the things that we can look at doing? I think it lies in our strong educational base in this city, starting with LTU and the five other universities that are within this one square mile. And the reason that I say that, and I'll go back and this is, I want to say when I got inspired to get a little more involved in this area because I watched LTU come before council. And LTU is the longest-standing educational institution in the city, the largest educational institution in the city. And please don't take this the wrong way, but I felt that they were mistreated. I thought that they were treated as a stranger when they are friends and they are a neighboring institution who has been here for a long time. And I watched a very positive student housing project get a very, very hard time before And after that happened, and it did pass and it did go through, but I felt the need to reach out to LTU. And I made a point of attending a number of student government meetings because I said, "Why is there this disconnect? What is going on here with our largest educational institution if they come before city council and they are strangers to council and council is strangers to them? It shouldn't be that way." So I took it upon myself to attend a number of meetings. And one of the first questions I asked at the student government meeting is I got up, I introduced myself. Many of the students were familiar with our development because they frequent the establishments for food and so forth. And we have looked to put in discount plans and so forth for the students so that they would patronize our establishments. And I asked, "How many of you know where the Southfield City Center is?" And I'll tell you how many hands went up in that room. Zero. No hands went up in that room. And if the largest university in our own backyard, students don't know where the Southfield City Center is, how are we expecting neighboring communities, states, people from outside of the country to know where the Southfield City Center is? It starts with our own backyard. So I'll go back and say that I think our major driving force is LTU, the surrounding universities in the area. I think we need to make a stronger connection with LTU and the other educational institutions. The best answer that I got from any of the students is I got one person raised his hand and he squeaked out Evergreen Road and that was the best that we could get to where the city center was. One thing that I do feel about LTU is their renewed student base annually, and I'm speculating here, probably outnumbers the number of new businesses and residents combined that come to Southfield every year. Because you have to understand, there's new students coming from abroad every year. There's a brand-new talent pool. There's brand-new students. There's a brand-new population. And some of the things that we have seen, what U of M has done for Ann Arbor or OCC has done for Royal Oak, I think... C has done for Royal Oak, I think having five universities in a one square mile, especially a university like L T U can do this for Southfield as well. After attending, oh, let me just say this. So I would say, I think it would be maybe members of council serving as ambassadors, maybe attending a student government meeting, maybe members of L T U student government meeting, attending a city council meeting, tour the campus, attend events. We've hosted a number of competitions to get involvement from the students and to get their involvement in the city center. Students want to experience a true campus life and L T U has an issue as well if there is, if this city does not provide a pedestrian friendly, true campus lifestyle that students who come from as far across the world as China and Romania and having listened to many, many stories of students who have many choices to choose, different universities have chosen L T U. But many students also leave after the first year because they don't feel that they're getting the true campus life experience. They feel they are on an island. They feel they are disconnected. They can't walk off of their campus. There are no local establishments. We say, well, what does this have to do with realizing our vision and realizing these conceptual drawings that we see? How do we make it a reality? Well, we need to get the students here first. We need to keep the students here second. And by creating density and a population, now the students don't leave at night. L T U is trying to make a transition from a quote unquote commuter campus. It's got athletics and things that are going on now. That they have students that are not only here during the morning, the daytime, the evening and the weekends. We need to increase that population. It is that population and that activity and that traffic and that visual of students like the Arbor Loss Project actually being visible and present in the city center district that will draw your Panera and your Dairy Queens and all of these other businesses here. It's the students playing frisbee football on the front lawn of the city and seeing that activity. Because guess what? I think we need to capitalize on their youth and their energy. And guess what? We all want to capitalize on youth and energy. We want to be where that youth and energy and activity is. People are drawn to where people are. And that is why I think it is key to cater to our universities, cater to our educational institutions. And I think that will help us establish the cafes, the pubs, the coffee shops, the social gathering places, both inside and outside. We are in Michigan. We're lucky to get six months out of the year where we can be outside. If there is a place to sit outside, we will sit there at every opportunity we can. It was 50 degrees this weekend and convertible tops were down and people were wearing shorts. So, you know, some of my firsthand dealings with L T U is, I will say, it is a community university with world-class appeal. And I've heard many stories from many students who have come from very, very far places and have conquered many hardships to be here. And I think we have a duty and a responsibility and an obligation to provide the best experience that we can, the best city that we can, to them to make it work their while. And again, increasing the student base, making them part of the city center is key. Hosting events, sharing facilities. They have new athletic teams and so forth. Those teams should be playing in the city center. There should be no question about it that those events, those games should be hosted in the city center. Because then you've got visiting teams coming from other cities and other places who then, again, are creating a demand, we're creating a density and we are now creating a need for a Panera and everything else that everybody else wants to see in this area. Creating density, demand will attract new business and development that will maintain evening and weekend population. The first building block is, I am on board, heavily on board with Evergreen Road as being the first building block. It is the major artery that goes through our city center and it is imperative that it goes through without delay, that all of the easements are granted, that all of the necessary grant writing, anything else that needs to be done happens without hesitation and the politics all put aside to get this done. If it doesn't happen, I fear what will happen to this area. This is bigger than Walmart, this is bigger than Golden Corral, this is the biggest thing that we have on our agenda. And most importantly, we need to start thinking out of the box. We need to realize, as great as a community as we are, as good of a job that we have done in the past in building this city to what it is today, we have a head start, all of the surrounding communities. We were here long before Royal Oak. We've got a heck of a jump on downtown Detroit and we should be leading the charge. And we do need to think out of the box and we need to realize that maybe what did not work 20, what worked 20 years ago is not necessarily going to work today. If that means mixed use developments, if that means, and I'll kind of circulate back here. We have a DDA, but the thought of a CDA, a corridor development authority for giving us the funding that we need. If this is what we feel and we all agree around this table that the city center is the most important thing, then we need to have a bigger budget than what it is we're necessarily working with. We have increased, I believe, Terry, this past year, we increased the special assessment district slightly, I mean, for the first time in a very long time as well, but it's not enough. But we also, and I'll say this, the people of Pedworth Avenue can't affect every decision that council makes. It is two blocks of people and we need to start thinking about what is right for this city contrary to what the voices of two blocks may say. Naturally, people are hesitant to change. And I will tell you that five years ago, when we proposed our project on Evergreen, we got pushback from the neighborhood and they didn't want it and so forth and so on. And if you go back today and you ask any of them that are there and you ask anybody who was on council, we would say that city center plaza has been a success. And sometimes we have, you are the elected officials, you are chosen to make the right decision for this city and its residents and sometimes we have to make the decision for them and we, that sort of thing.
Linda, I think you are, the university might want to hire him.
I'll pay him later.
I just want to respond very quickly to you that I totally agree with you that, I mean, L T U is such a jewel and it's really a wonderful institution to have in our city and that the students are there 24/7. It's the same thing with O C C who plan to double their enrollment. They're about 4,000, they want to see an 8,000 student campus down south of Nine Mile. Absolutely. And I use the example, I've shared this with some of the council before, but I spent, the sister lives in Phoenix, I go down there on occasion, and Bruce Babett downtown built a shopping center. And it was called the Mercado. It was a state Mexican motif market. And it failed. It failed because downtown Phoenix, everybody left at five o'clock. And so what happened, very smart on the Phoenix City Fathers was, the Mercado became the branch campus of A S U. And you go downtown now in Phoenix and there's nightlights, there are people on the street. It has changed dramatically because that whole city block and more has become a college campus. It's, and anybody that knows, you know, lived in a college town knows what that can do. And we really don't quite have it here, although L T U students sure support the restaurants on Evergreen Road.
Terrific.
I see the eating area, you know, all the time.
We have a unique combination of a, we have the talent here. We need to keep the talent here. L T U is a magnificent talent pool and we have the highest concentration of Fortune 500 companies anywhere. So those two things should go hand in hand. There should be internships lined up. There should be relationships between these local businesses and Fortune 500 companies and L T U. They shouldn't be going anywhere else looking for a job. And suddenly, if you're going to school here and you're working here, guess what? You're living here as well. And that's the key. And that's why I say it all stems from the educational institutions. It may sound very simplistic, but I really think it is that simple.
And not to be defensive, but I would take a little exception with, I know that the mayor, Councilman Fraser Moss, myself, Councilman Pacasi, Ms. Seymour, we regularly show up on campus. Now, I have never attended a student government meeting. And I doubt that any of my colleagues have either, but we pride that relationship. Anyhow, I, you had asked, Steve and Mr. Lance, who is after Mr. Moss?
Yeah. We agree. I think we're on the same page with what you're saying. And, you know, it's interesting balance that we have to take when we're on council where you have to listen to the needs of the development community and advisory boards, such as yourself, and also make it a practical reality for the residents. So my question is, based on, you know, what you're saying and what you see, you know, the needs for all of us to move forward to make this vision a reality, if you could drive or write the agenda for the city council meeting, what are some of the items you would place on it? I mean, we're talking very high level looking down, but in terms of what we can affect, what we can do as a city council, what are some of the things that you guys discussed at your meetings that you would like to see council act on? And we need to hear this. You know, we need the criticism, we need the open honesty because we want to be active partners. What would you put on our agenda that we could be able to hear your advice, put it in policy and move things forward?
I'll try to know that quickly. I think one thing that has been very helpful when it has happened is to have somebody from council present for a city center advisory board meeting because it's going from our mouth to your ears and you are then in allude and privy to everything that we are necessarily doing without having to have any special meetings. That would be very helpful. We wouldn't have to have any PowerPoint presentation showing you what we've done or what we're working on because it would go directly to you. And I think council would derive ideas from just attending those meetings and making suggestions and working together and forging a partnership. And that was probably the first thing I would like to see on the agenda.
Do you want to know what can be done?
She's responding to that one. We'll get to you.
That's one of the biggest problems I have with tenants. Every time they come in, wants to put their name on the building. Can't blame them, they want it. You go to Troy, there's a name on every face of every building. And that's where all the tenants are going. Now, I don't know if you remember what Microsoft had to go through to try to get their name on the building, but that was kind of embarrassing. It's like, really? You don't want Microsoft to put their name on the building? You don't want Microsoft here? They put, you know, one of, at that point, eight on the planet technologies in Southfield, which was huge for us.
So who signed the law?
It was finally passed, but initially it was, no, you can't do that because there's already signs on.
I don't know about, I'm not counsel.
That was through the, from one of the committees. The zoning board. And I will second that because we have that issue with the university quite often when it comes to signage or banners. We had people come to campus after we spent a lot of money to buy banners to hang around the university and within the university. And we had people from the city come to the campus to tell us we had to take them down because we weren't allowed to have them.
Yeah, we're the elected officials. We make the decisions.
They were people who weren't part of the city.
It never came to council with the department.
We have, just to let you all know, we've done the first review of our sign and we're having these meetings and Northland said the same thing.
Yeah, this is important to hear. I mean-
The council has done a review of the whole sign package and we approved the first part of it, which had to do with LED signs. Very soon, this spring, we will be bringing the whole thing back to our council. We've had a full agenda, so it's not back yet, but it's on its way. But thank you for that feedback.
The last time I talked to the sign department about it, office signage was not on the agenda, was not to be an issue, was not the company council. So you may think you're getting that, but you're not getting that. You're getting a bunch of other peanut signs and LEDs and you're not taking care of business.
That's something actually that Ms. Jordan and I have actually just sat in a meeting about with our preliminary economic development committee that we set up. And it's something that we're going to look at. We just had a conversation about this about two weeks ago. So that's something we're hearing for the second time, but it's important.
Hi, Chris.
There's a second piece of this. We actually, Ms. Freeman and I actually have L S L planning under contract and we actually have a preliminary draft that looks at building signs and amassing of buildings. We've analyzed, what, Atlanta and four other markets. After council digests the first piece, that piece will move forward to, from the administration to council. Mr. Schret and I talked about this very issue probably around six o'clock tonight, but that is moving along the pipeline. The first thought was to get council through what they've been working on and then move from this first phase and will soon begin to roll that out to planning. We've actually worked outside of our sign and our current zoning group in order to have a different approach to this. L S L, who did this to the Glass Master Plan, took a look at a lot of what other major markets are doing. And I think, we think this is something that we've heard repeatedly from the business community that folks, I think this is what you're looking for. And we really use the Microsoft as an issue to make sure we can handle this. We're about halfway done with that work product. So with this conversation, we'll probably be springing and rolling it out a lot sooner.
I just want to add to that. What I hear tonight and what we heard from the board is that instead of us sitting here internally figuring out what our sign policy is, you know, we're hearing input, wouldn't it be good to run a proposed policy through our business team? This board right here has multiple cities with signs. And we do that so often where we sit here and we say as a city, this is what we want. And then when we don't get what we think we're going to get, then we say, why isn't it happening? Then we get feedback from you all. So I would strongly recommend, and you don't have to do a lot of work because every member of this board has multiple cities that they represent. It would be great to get that input. I was driving from Rochester Hills, driving down Expressway and I flew around, every building had all four corners posted. I saw it going west, I saw it going south, basically, except we have a policy, you only can have two signs.
And only so big.
And the other, Mr. Moss?
Well, I mean, it's really, you know, anything else for us to hear. And I mean, this could be a longer meeting if necessary, or at least, you know, I don't know if you guys want to take it back and internally discuss it and bring it back to council. But these are things, you know, as Sid and Joan said, that we don't hear on a constant basis. Sometimes it does get muddled down through the process, but there, you know, this is the time to bring this to us and vice versa.
If they're working on it, they should bring it to our city center board as soon as they've got a program. I mean, we don't need to do it from four different directions. And Rochelle's working on it, then get it to us as soon as you can and we'll provide input with it before it comes to you and see if we can help you that way and you would put them.
All right, Mr. Lance is waiting.
I have an answer to you, Murphy. L T U dormitory, the dormitory, remember? Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
You built the dormitory about maybe five feet away from that subdivision. If we allowed you to build a dormitory at the time, you would render the whole subdivision worthless. Did you realize that? I told you that at the beginning and I taught you like hell not to build it there.
It wasn't my dormitory. He just got hired by his empty group.
Over here. Taught them, finally you backed off, I don't know why. Taught them, uh, finally you backed off. I don't know why. Because all those houses would go for nothing. People would lose their whole living, their whole life living there. Okay, another problem. You talk about L T U. I used to be gung ho for L T U. Did everything from my could, I could when Chamberlain was there and Marburger was there. It was terrific. Now, in my whole career, I compiled a database on how to raise a million dollars. What do you think of that? And I went up to the president of L T U. No, first I had an meeting with his assistant. I had lunch with her at the Skyline Club. And I showed her the database and she was, she was a, she was, she didn't know what to say. It was terrific. It was good. I'm a gem. So she went back to President Weber. He didn't want to see me. He didn't want it. He didn't want this database. I offered him for nothing. What do you think of that?
I say try and try again.
I did, but it didn't work. I, I had it in my car, and two years ago, they stole my car in Southfield. And the database was there.
He probably, uh.
Nobody got it.
Alfred Thomas, Alfred Thomas made it gotten that plan.
And I called Weber, no Wyman, he was president then. And he wouldn't, he wouldn't return the call. So, hey, I don't have to beg him. He should have thanked me because I offered him help to raise money. I had to straighten you out.
Thank you.
Now, I'm not an enemy of L T U. Well, maybe now you got a good president to listen to people, maybe. I don't know. I haven't tried it yet.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, Councilman Seymour, you'd asked, or you made a comment about this being the third iteration, you know, that you've seen.
What I've seen.
You've mentioned you've been here since nineteen sixty-five. Two thousand thirteen. Um, you know, the, the mid-century modern, the peak of Southfield, twenty years ago, ten years ago, at, at some point, uh, you know, the, the peak of Southfield, there was this vision at that time for a city center as well.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it didn't happen for a host of reasons. Uh, but, but going forward where we are, times haven't improved. Times have gotten harder and more difficult. And so I think we have to ask ourselves again honestly, is it, um, are we doing the same thing and getting the same result? Of course, you know, that's, um, it's in. So we have to really understand and look at, what can we do? And this is a question that you asked, but, but as I look at it, if development were going to happen from a developer's perspective, it already would happen. It would happen twenty years ago. In spite of our issues here or any other issue, development would happen. If there's a economic incentive, if they're that lucrative, it would have happened. Buildings would have been knocked down. Um, retail would have been constructed. And then if it was easy, that would have happened. But it's not. It hasn't been easy. And it's been difficult for, I'd say, um, from a developer's standpoint, really on, on two key things. One is understanding this market. It's not an easy market to get your arms around from a, a retailer or a service provider's perspective because of this kind of dichotomy between the daytime population and the permanent population, uh, demographics. There's all kinds of, kind of confluence of information that, that isn't easy for retailers to get their arms around. Secondly, is, um, competition from green space. Probably three reasons. I gotta keep going. But the second reason would be competition from green space. As, as developers and attracting tenants for a variety of things, mixed use, from residential to retail to, to other, it's about staying with their format. So they have a certain design, certain box design, whether it's small or large. It's much easier on a greenfield development to stick with that design, say traditional kind of strip retail or whatever, whatever that design may be, than something that's more urban. It costs more. There's, there's a lot, uh, it's a change of the format, et cetera. I think really the, the third part of this is, is the approval process. What is the, um, what can be expected when that developer, development group comes to Southfield with a concept or an idea? Is it easy for them? Is, is Southfield saying, here's our vision? We can get you approved for a submittal to site plan in ninety days or less? Or sixty days? And so clearly articulating kind of exactly what is needed for a developer to get to the next step. I think that uncertainty, I know that uncertainty is a significant barrier for any developer. They're going to go with that path of least resistance. And that path of least resistance may be a green field or something that's already done. Uh, but, but the zoning within the city center is, I, I mean, I don't know it is. Even with this overlay district, it's still extremely difficult to interpret what that means. It really means, come to city council, tell us what you have in mind, and we'll think about it if it fits within this. Because you have so much, um, room to interpret what that means that can kind of fall on basically discretion here of council. So developers are about time and efficiency. If they view this as a difficult road and one of which is going to encounter a lot of challenges, they're probably going to go to other opportunities. So I think really what the city has to think about is how do we make it easier for the development community? And I think a big part of that is with this vision here from C I, what they put together is formally adopt that. Say, this is our plan. Let's talk about, uh, parking requirements, set back, height, facade, material, whatever it may be. All of those should be already thought out in detail so that if you comply with these, you can do it. Not come to me and, and fit, we'll think about it, and, and, you know, that type of thing. So I think that's a, that's a really big, uh, next step. I think the overlay district was a nice first step, but I think we really might suggestion would be to get much more specific. And then also with the C C A B's, uh, you know, partnership, because we kind of are that, that private side of things that we can help identify, they prioritize this larger mixed use vision that, that C I put together. Rather than saying, here it is, developers come and develop on this, why don't we focus on one corner? And perhaps it's, uh, the Arborloft corner as an example. There's a lot of positive things happening already. So maybe that's the first corridor that we work on from Civic Center Drive to Central Park Boulevard to the plaza, just a, a, a small little stretch. And, and get, and, uh, get a coordinated effort from, from the city. Maybe there's money that we need to raise. We can go out and, and raise money for some public improvement. Or get a, uh, a coalition of all the various brokerages in town. We've got all the major brokerage houses who are here. And if we can put them behind this and say, hey, here's something that the city and the C C A B collectively are trying to, uh, uh, enact and try to get off the ground. So I think often it's, we, sometimes we have a habit of getting it our own way. And I think we just have to really think about, it hasn't worked. Uh, how can we change this? Let's make it easier for developers. Uh, let's, let's establish a clear, uh, criteria. And then let's make it, let's, let's kind of reduce the scale of this. Let, then, then make it kind of a, uh, you say spoon feeding. A small phase, a small first step. Because I don't think this is a, um, the, the next lifestyle thing that, that's going to happen. That, that would have happened twenty years ago, ten years ago with the last, last cycle. It didn't happen. So we've got to think more grassroots. We've got to think, it's great to have this vision. It's great to steer developers with this because it really helps developers follow that. But we can't, um, expect a, a, a large grand scale development to occur. I think we really have to make it happen on a more grassroots level and, and so adopt some things that, that C C A B is recommending, I think will be a great first step.
Um, Mr. Fraser with next, uh, Mr. Peterson.
Yes, um, a lot of the, the things that you've talked about, uh, have hit home with me. Um, and before I start my comment, one of the things that I strongly believe in and hope that everybody around the table knows is that if we're going to solve a hard problem, we have to put the problem on the, on the table and then talk about it. Um, and so far you guys are doing a pretty good job. Uh, and that, that's not a criticism. I, that's the way you get things solved. If we try to be nice to each other, and I'm not saying we should be angry with each other, but if, if we just try to talk around the problem, we'll never get to the bottom of it. Um, and so I'd like to respond to some of the, the comments that, that you made from my perspective. And one of them is, um, uh, the comment about giving L T U a hard time when they came with their, uh, with their dorm. Uh, now I'm getting older, so my, um, memory isn't as crisp as it was, but don't tell me why that. Uh, it seemed to me the majority of the pushback to that dorm came from the people on Circle Drive. And I don't know that the council was against the, the, the dorm itself. What we were trying to do is resolve the issue so that, um, the people on, on Circle Drive felt more comfortable with, with the students that were in housing in their neighborhood that were having bonfires in the, on the weekends and all. So actually, the problems that we were trying to stop didn't have an awful lot to do with the, with the dorm. It was more about the, the relationship between the students and the neighborhood. So, uh, and I, you know, it got to be kind of a heated discussion, but it wasn't, it wasn't about that. But, um, frankly, I think most of the council was for the, was for the dorm, to get it, get it built. Um, one of the things we, I keep hearing about is we need more restaurants. We need more, uh, things to keep people in town. And I want to go back to the corner of, of Southfield and Ten Mile. When our, um, former planner was here, we had another plan for that piece of property. And it was, uh, medical buildings and other, other uses on that, on that piece of property. But the thing that opened my eyes and made me, you know, set back was there was a Buxton study about restaurants coming into Southfield. And the Buxton study said restaurants aren't interested in coming to Southfield, but they wouldn't tell us why. They, uh, and they, Nick rattled up a, a whole list of, of this. So my question to you as developers is, what do we need to do to turn that around to have restaurants come in, in town? We used to have a Red Lobster. The Red Lobster closed. I like Red Lobster. My wife like, likes Red Lobster. We go down to the one on Plymouth Road and have to wait forty-five minutes before we can get a table. We go to the one on Telegraph Road and we have to wait to get a table. Um, and I see people that I know in those restaurants. So people in Southfield do go to restaurants, uh, and they go to Red Lobster. But it was my understanding, I, I mean, it might, they closed a restaurant. Now Denny's is closing. Uh, they're changing it to a Panera. Um, and there doesn't seem to be, yeah, I know it. There doesn't seem to be any plans to keep a breakfast restaurant, a traditional breakfast restaurant in the city of Southfield. We had a Bob Evans. It's now a Kirby's. Um, so what do we need to do as, you know, as the developing community to help us, uh, do what we need to do to bring restaurants in town? And I voted for Golden Corral.
Mr. Fraser, I, I think some of this is generational in regards to restaurants. We saw some type of Bill Naps on Evergreen that no one had known of your business as well.
And a Red Seagull down at the corner of Nine Mile.
Yeah.
Um, okay. Quick serve, uh, quick serve, uh, restaurants are, are, are taken home. And I think it's, it's more generational that, that sit down, long family dinner at the restaurant. It is, it is not as common as, as maybe necessarily used to be. And it's being replaced by, Debbie being replaced with a Panera. It's not that there's not going to be a restaurant. There's going to be a different kind of restaurant in.
But I'm, but I'm waiting forty-five minutes at Red Lobster. So that is a sit down restaurant where families go and, you know, they're making noise and having birthday parties. Um, so I hear you, but also I'm experiencing the same kind of thing that left, left Southfield.
Why did they leave Southfield?
I don't know.
I know. And you know.
Well, there was a, there was a shooting there.
Yeah, okay.
But there's.
Shooting in there was another one.
Yeah, but there's shootings in other places and.
Shooting in Southfield.
Well, that is probably the, an excuse to, to leave.
I think ours, it might have to do with the population not being as.
Denver, LA.
Well, there's just not being as much people here at night. At much time it was jammed because I used to, I used to get everything from my office.
It was jammed at night, too.
Um, but I think a lot of, a lot of what caring has started is working. With the example of the Arborloft, you know, they came there, they wanted to do something. No, 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 we can't do this. Why don't you do this? And they did, which is fabulous. But we need to have enough population. And, I mean, I've got office. Office, right now, is going to be supported by people who want to live close. But we don't have enough density for people to live. I mean, I've got the little condos, townhomes there, and there's the condos, but there's not enough places for people to live, to populate my dorms. And that's, we need to have more people in here. So we're going to be here twenty-four seven. That's going to drive more of the rest of the more of the things going on in Southfield. And it's, you know, it's still chicken on the neck. You know, you're one or the other.
Right.
But, and secondly, it's baby stuff.
Right. Uh, one other thing I'd like to say with this, with this talk right now, I'll, I'll come back later on. But when we went to Reston, Virginia and saw that, that was a, a city that was created by Shell Oil Company. They backed it. Uh, in Detroit, Dan Gilbert has deep pockets and he's buying up buildings and turning the core city around. The city I grew up in, Kalamazoo, had the Gilmore's, the Up Johns, uh, the Strikers. They had people with deep pockets that could invest in the community. And Kalamazoo was pretty poor. They had the first walking mall because one of the, you know, the Gilmore's or whoever was over in Germany and saw that that's what they had done. They closed down a street and made it a walking mall. So they came back, closed down Birding Street, which is main and early for the, the center of the city, closed down Birding Street and made it a, a walking mall. And it was that way for twenty-five years or, or longer, thirty years maybe. And now they, things have changed and they're starting to change it back again. But we need to find an angel, if we're a theater business, we need to find an angel or, or we need to find some of the deep pockets that can help fund these things to get us, get us going. And then maybe some, uh, maybe some, uh, things that will keep it rolling after we, after we get it started. But I don't know how we could afford to plump the, the whole thing down.
I guess.
Yeah, so, sorry.
Mr. Crowe.
Yeah, this is a great discussion and I don't, I don't want to take away from it, but anyone said, um, just that last time when we went with the planning commission, they kind of shared some trends and, and challenges. And we need to understand what's coming so that we can react. I think the overlay development district is a great first step. And I think that's the partnership between the business community and the council. And there's more that we need to do. And I just go back to our suburban land use model that served us well in the sixties and seventies did not adapt with the changing times. And why do we have buildings as islands surrounded by a sea of asphalt? Well, we require people to be at least seventy feet back from the load. Well, we require people to be at least seventy feet back from the load, we require at least six parking spaces per thousand square feet, and we didn't have all the other things that we've been talking about. And that's why we got the built environment that we do. So, looking at our standards, addressing the needs of the business community, looking at future trends, and working with the council, those are some easy, longing improves by adapting the sign ordinance, adapting our zoning codes and ordinances. And then, I think, the, as I mentioned, the public infrastructure improvements. We don't own a lot of the private land, but people got to get there on public utilities and public streets and some of the other amenities that we've been talking about. So, I think those are some things that we can work in the short term on as we try to track the longer-term private-public partnerships.
I disagree with Stefan, you said one area. I don't think that, let me see if I can quote you correctly. If development were going to happen, it would have happened. And I do disagree with that, because there has been so much change in the last twenty years, especially in the last decade. Sociological change, demographic change, excuse me, technological change, that it warrants that we abandon the old ways of thinking and step outside the box, as someone has said, and plan for new development to attract a younger, perhaps more sophisticated, certainly technologically more sophisticated, consumer audience. And I think we can do that. So, I think we can still develop the kind of Southfield that we all envision. The drawings that we see around us don't really tell us what the content is of those office buildings, or the content is of those retail facilities. And we can design retail facilities to fit those people who browse and buy online. So, we can do this. And so, I don't think we'll practice insanity of just doing the same things over and over again. One other point I'd like to make, because I have a question of the council. I was an active participant in the Walmart decision-making process. What I saw happening was a council that was, except for Council of Lands, overwhelmed by too much, there was too much intensity for that corner, too much traffic, too much noise, too much risk, too much neighborhood resistance. So, my question of council members is, how do you draw that line? When is it too much? When is it just enough? Is this based on gut feeling or analysis or...
We know when we see it.
Right. I was afraid you were going to say that. And that's it, those are my comments right now.
Mr. Moore.
Actually, we have building codes, we have all kinds of things to tell us when something isn't fitting properly. There are standards. We can talk about it later, but I've, if you've been around here, we know when we see it. One of the things that I would like to see, and it's not just the city center, it's not just, pardon me, it's not just the city center, but it would be all the vacant buildings that we have, because all of these are important to us, Ken, don't go away. I think we need to know where our vacant buildings are, I think we need a map that we can talk to developers about, a map that shows all our vacant buildings and those buildings that have high vacancies. Those are things that we need as a council to, and our marketing people, our business development people need this. I think we need it in the city center, and I think we need it for our other major buildings. It would help us. And most of those buildings are, thank you, most of those buildings are in the general area, between, I'd say, Northland, Nine Mile, and, I don't know. Most of those large buildings are there, but that's what we need, and I think councils should make a point of trying to get this map. I'd like to ask our planning department and our business development department to work together and get this. It's a tool we need. We don't know what we have, in that sense, comment. Thank you.
Mr. Moore.
Yeah, just briefly to answer the question, where does that mine get drawn? I think, you know, that's what the ideal place of the city center is for something like that. You know, we had a meeting between, in between the audience, between the planning commission, us, and the zoning board of appeals. And I was talking about comparing something to New York City, and talking about how, you know, people my generation like kind of that walkable bubble. You know, I had a friend whose cousin couldn't live outside of that nine-block radius. Wanted his grocery store, wanted his gym, his job, his apartment, he even wanted his girlfriend, all within that nine, living within that nine-block radius. And one of the zoning board of appeals members said, well, I don't want Southfield to be like New York City. So, that's, our job is to identify parts where we can do this intense type of development. So, I think, you know, we're all gung ho, I think, you know, at least I am, about densely developing this area and making it so it fits the needs of somebody who works there and would want to live there, and create that dense area. The problem is that, you know, we need to come up together, us as a council and you as a board, but also working together of what are tangible next steps to get there. Short of, and Dan Gilbert, isn't he a student of Southfield later grad? We should write him a letter, at least, you know, tugging at his heartstrings, your city needs you. But we need to write the plan together. I like the idea of what Stefan said, I like the idea of a formal adaptation of this, you know, where we have the field of approval from this council. With parameters, not necessarily it's set in stone and this is what it is, but I think we should bring it back to council. So, at least as you do some of the shopping in Southfield on your behalf, you can say, this fits in with the city's vision without feeling like, you know, you're stepping out of line. I think we should take the lead on council to say, this is the type of vision we're looking for, so that when developers come through you and through Terry, there's an expectation that council agrees with it, with the heights, with the setbacks, with the parking. So, I think that's something that we should bring forward and something that we should adapt and say, we're gung ho on this type of plan.
Can I respond to that, sir? Councilwoman Seymour, thank you. Councilwoman Seymour said that we have standards, and we know it when, as you said, Council President Cyberg, we know it when we see it. I don't have a lot of time to speak.
Yeah, he didn't mean that, literally.
Well, no, what I want to do, what I want to go to is the meeting with the planning commission. Because one of the things I learned in that meeting is the planning commission does not pass judgment on a particular project, but rather determines whether or not it meets the standards. So, if it conforms to the standards that are in place, and I'm not saying that they've got standards in mind for intensity or something that's fairly abstract, or density, well, how much density is too much density? And I'll use Walmart as my point of reference. If that passed the planning commission, got to the council, and the council said no, why? Because apparently, it had met the standard.
We've had those situations with the planning commission before. We've had those same situations with the planning commission before. They might all think it's wonderful, that we said it was imperative that we rezone that corner, that was a statement that the chairman of the planning commission meant. This was basically a rezoning issue. And, you know, they can say what they want to say, but we're the first people that ultimately have to be responsible. And I'm not talking about, you know, somebody said here that this was all about Edward Street, it was never about Edward Street. And neither was Golden Corral about Edward Street. And if you think that, you're misinformed. Walmart had a much broader impact in that area. And I, I mean, we, there's no question in my mind that it wasn't suitable for that corner. There's just no question in my mind. But we never said, no, wait a minute, we never said, because Walmart came and talked to me first and some staff, they wanted to meet with individual council people, I was struck in the time. And they, we had two other sites that we, two or three other sites, I think three, that we wanted them to look at and recommend, and they said, oh, no, we've got it all of these, and this is the only one we want. There were three other sites that they could have gone to, and they said, no, we only want the one in Southfield. So, we never said, don't come to Southfield. It was that particular corner that they wanted to rezone. Had it been properly zoned, and even the committee of planning commission said it's imperative that we rezone this against something, well, no, it isn't. You wait until the right thing comes along. And I'm a strong believer that you don't accept the first thing comes along unless it's the right thing. And in a sense, I have to agree with Ken. If you've been here for a period of time, and you've been working on land use issues, you have a sense of what's going to work in an area. And if you don't, you shouldn't be making those decisions. But we do have, now let me finish, we do have the zoning ordinance, we have our code, our building codes, we have all of these things to tell us. And there were some things said about that site that were not accurate, that we were fed. So, and I mentioned a couple of them at the meeting. And if I had to vote again today, I would vote the same way.
So, we know it when we see it.
Well, it's not that simple. You have to, you do have, it's more than the standards, it's the rules. It's the code, the zoning code, the zoning code, all of that.
Again, as I said to the planning commission, our filter is a little different in that we are elected and we respond to the citizenry. And sometimes, we hear things that are not, you know, we've been through it before, traffic alone, you can't build a thing in this town without somebody saying, oh, the traffic. Well, I don't pay a lot of attention to traffic, but there are other factors, and whether it's the dorm at L T U, it's always about the neighborhood. That becomes a very high priority with the council of, as Mr. Lance said earlier, the impact of the dorm on the people in the neighborhood, I mean, we have to. If we didn't listen to the residents, then we wouldn't be doing our job. So, that's a very big piece of it. I, Mr. Lawrence wanted to speak, and then I'm not sure if there's somebody else. Oh, okay. Okay, Mr. Lawrence.
I just wanted to say thank you everyone for your, I just comment. One of the things that I think is imperative that no one said, I think it's the eight-hundred pound rule in the room, we are an edge city to the city of Detroit. And you know that the city of Detroit lacks so many amenities that everything we build, we don't build for the city of Southfield. We build for a much broader demographic. And we shouldn't, the city does roll up its streets and become a bedroom community. There's some people in the council who have said, we like it like that. We don't want anybody moving around after ten o'clock. So, when you come with this and you say, we want to create density, we want people walking around, a lot of people are, who's going to be walking around? Where are they going to come from? What are they going to be doing? Oh, my God, that means we have to stay awake after ten. And we have to be real about those legitimate concerns. So, the one piece I would be want to put on, anything that we do, we have to build it in mind of releasing it, keeping it safe. It's not just opening up a restaurant or opening up activities after dark. We have to create an environment where everyone feels safe to walk their dog and sit out on a bench. And we have to create and send a message that this is a protected, safe area for the community. And if you don't do that, and you can build it and you will not get the people you want there. We have an outback now that's in the city of Southfield, and I can bet you probably eighty percent of their clients are Detroit. Northland Mall, very few people from the city of Southfield shop at Northland, very few people here. But very few people from Southfield are shopping at that mall and our city. And so, we're going to have to be savvy, because how in the world can a Ferndale attract more people than a Southfield? I mean, be real. Come on. And we saying we competing with Ferndale? Birmingham, I guess. But Ferndale, our educational level, our earned income, our business climate, everything that we have is way above. All they have are little shops, none of them are named. We keep saying we want name shops, none of them are name shops. But how dare we even say we're competing with a Ferndale? But it is that eight-hundred pound rule in the room, what kind of people are in Southfield after you get off of work? And part of that, if we could keep our working community in the city with, you know, I go to, what's the tavern in the fountain place in South, in, know by Louis? Every bar in Louis that I've gone to have been a watering hole for the business community. I don't know what happens afterwards, but life and after work. And so, why aren't we looking at that type of thing? Because that's what most of the young people want, they want to go after work, meet with their colleagues, have a beer, have a snack, and then go home. So, we have to be inclusive. I think the part about the council validating that we want this, if the council does not validate this, we're going to have another plan in ten years, looking at it. Is this what the council wants? And the council's going to have to say, yay, yay, tweak it, do something, and then we got to go blockbusters ahead, and our planner and our business development can say, look, come Southfield, we are doing this. Don't come, please, don't you want to come to our city? And do what? And we have to have a collective voice. Because I can tell you, I have been in, I have been in Las Vegas, trying to sell the city, trying to get retailers to come. And I feel pretty lonely. But if we have the city center board collectively saying, and you see other cities, they'll have the whole city plan, you can go there, you can go there, you can go there, and the business of those, I've seen, you know, well, I know the middle of the desert, I've seen cities created since I've been there. And it was not based on anything, it's just like, you know, this is what will be, and they can see it and they plug in. But we've got to get the side in from council. Council, we have to say, if not, we're going to do exactly what you said, it'll be the fourth and fifth plan. But we keep saying, wow, doesn't that look nice? And it hasn't been affirmed to this. The other thing that we have heard continuously, council, is approving plans, and I had one of the, someone from the other meeting who says, we don't care how much it costs, when we come to do business, that's not a concern of mine. Who, anyone on our planning, on our zone, on the C D A, anyone that's participating should care what it costs to do business in the city of Southfield, if you truly understand we're competitive. That should be an issue. It should not be the arrogance that, we can charge you a million dollars if you want to do business in Southfield, so what? Where Southfield paying? No, this is a new day. And that thing of keep doing the same thing over and over again, the arrogance we had and was allowed to have back in the day when we were the only ship sailing, is gone. We do have to be competitive. How can we get our approval process to ninety days or less? Somebody, we need to have that conversation, ninety days or less, is that a goal? Is it a reality? How does other cities compare to us? And everyone on our planning commissions, our zoning board, and you all, we all should be on the same page with the city. Thank you.
Ken, and then John.
I just wanted to bring something for you to think about. You have to answer to the residents. You have to answer to your residents and the taxpayers. But please remember that business is taxpayers, too. In fact, we are the largest percentage of your income. And a lot of times, we feel like we're ahead of the century. Because you listen to the people who have the homes here, which yes, is important. But when you listen to somebody who's got a thousand-square-foot home, and you tell somebody who's got a five-hundred, thousand-square-foot somebody who's got a five hundred, thousand square foot building, "Do you know what? You can just do whatever, I don't care." That's not saying the right message.
Josh?
Josh? Um, I just want to lend a quick perspective. Someone asked, "What do you see, what do you hear? What agenda items might we take up in the future?" And I think we may not have the answers today as to what the next step might be. We have a goal, we have a broad overview of where we want to go. But I think what we have to put on the agenda is realizing what's here and what we have, and what we've started, and, and what our opportunities are. I can tell you what I think probably all of us see each day is Southfield has imbalance in supply and demand. You have a supply of office buildings that is much more than the demand at this point. But what you have to look at is how can you skew the supply and demand to make sure you can give yourself a leg up on competition to move that curve? I see probably, and I'm sure the rest of us see, several deals, several proposals each week. I'd say eighty percent of the proposals that I see for the six buildings we have in Southfield, and I would guess it's the same for everybody else, there are other, there are just people or businesses in Southfield moving from one building to another. I can tell you on a day-to-day basis, we're competing on a, for a tenant, we're competing with Radical for a tenant, we might be competing with Commerique for a tenant. What you do, what you see here is a zero-sum game, you know, going on. What you have to do, at, at, at least in, in our minds, is what you have to do in the near future is create your competitive edge to be able to attract new companies from outside of Southfield. Because what we see happening, and I think people would share, is Southfield's the center of it all, but pretty quick here, I, I don't think it's going to be the center of it all. You've got communities that are growing to the north, to the east, to the west, to the south, and a lot of these other communities that are close to Southfield have, like the Ferndales, for example, the Royal Oaks, for example, the Birmingham, somewhat Troy, have the walkable communities, have the amenities. And they're becoming centralized to where some of the housing population is growing, to where they're now becoming central, centrally located. To a lot of the companies that, when they're looking to move, when their lease is up, their biggest challenge or strife is their workforce and trying to balance where people live and where they're going to work. Any edge that you can give yourself to try to keep those people and attract new is what you have to put on the agenda. We, we have a goal in our office, and I'm, I'm the first to say that it's, it's, you know, it's not something that you'd want to do for any, any goal that you have, but if we can get eighty percent of our buildings in Southfield to eighty percent, that's a goal. And unfortunately, I think it's a good goal to have because it's very difficult to get over eighty percent in Southfield, given the dynamics that's going on. That's just a, you know, an everyday perspective I wanted to share with everybody, so you can kind of see what I think all of us see on a day-to-day basis when we're fighting over clients, tenants, new business. But it's a reality.
Do you have a square foot rental space for first-class office space in Southfield?
It, it...
I know, I think I'm...
It depends. I mean, there's office buildings for Class A.
Yeah, first class, but...
I mean, you're probably at, what, twenty-two bucks, twenty to twenty-two dollars? Twenty to twenty-two dollars? But you've got a lot of buildings on, you know, the, the southern edge of Southfield, and, you know, you're, you're getting a migration from some of those properties to the north, where in the economic times that we're at, you're getting some companies jumping from what they might be in a, they might have been in a C building to a B building, and a B to an A, because rates have been depressed. So, you've got buildings selling, or, I mean, leasing for twelve dollars, and you're trying to compete over here at, in the city center for maybe sixteen, eighteen, twenty dollars, but that's what you're dealt with. So, you have to pick and choose your balance of it.
Okay. I'm curious. Mr. Lawrence next.
Obviously, the city's about to embark on a major investment with Evergreen Road, and we just finished Civic Center. I'm, I'm a little, I've been just sitting back and listening, not heard any discussion about promotion, what we could do to help promote the region, nor have we heard, have I heard anything about economic development incentives? We've got a couple of brownfields that were done, speculation in the area. We've done some tax abatements, have not heard any of the brokerage members bring those up, are they of value? Some of us internally have been kicking around a review of our inceptor fee, either reducing it or discounting it. The new lofts was a good example. I'm partially bringing this up to see if there's some consensus for this amongst council, that the, the Iberlofts, forty thousand in inceptor fees, it'd be a tremendous user of water, new water customers, new ten thousand square foot will have a difference. It was a large issue for L T U. But I haven't heard any discussion about some of these other incentives, and I'm beginning to think, gosh, maybe we've sat through two and a half hours of discussion, and no one has even mentioned it. So, I'm just curious that. And then I would have pegged one of the most hot topics in here is selfless promotion of the vision. Every week, I see something on Dan Gilbert, sitting these meetings in the Urban Land Institute, here the million-dollar subsidy going into Whole Foods, and I know, Steph, and you've been in some of the meetings with M E D C, trying them to, to recognize the value of potential tax credits on, on your deal. And Terry, Shelley, and myself have met with every major department at the state, Michigan Economic Development Corporation, M S F A, Mike Feeney, trying to get them to, "Here's what we're doing to look like an urban core." And we know we can't compete on unless we look at it. So, I'm hoping to hear some discussion on, are these incentives worthwhile? Is there an opportunity for promotion? Is there an opportunity to get some type of collaboration between the brokerage community and the different markets? We're sending Shelley to a biotrade show, working with M E D C in different trade shows to attract different segments, but I'm not hearing any discussion about that. Is there anything that can be done in the collective in, in those areas, the incentives, collaborative marketing promotion?
Anybody care to respond?
I'll, I'll chime in briefly. I, I think the, the, having taken advantage of the brownfield and, and some of the various incentives, I think most importantly is, for the development community, it's, it's important to know that they exist first and foremost. And I think that if we are going to be promoting this vision and, and concept, that these incentives should go hand in hand, that, that this is what we're looking to do, and this is how we can help you get there. So, I think, I think most importantly is to, to be aware of that, that, at least outside of this room, that these, these incentives exist, and that in promoting the vision, that these incentives also are promoted hand in hand.
Anyone else?
I agree, I mean, Fred, I would agree with you. I think that we probably as a C C A B should, we have a, a separate meeting focusing on what tools are available, what, what is used outside of the timing, and how that can be packaged, you know, from a, a integration standpoint. So that when we're out there talking about this, we can't speak very intelligently and specifically about what it is, rather than state developer, well, here's kind of what to make, because developers are going to say, "Uh, you know, I'm six or nine months," it's, it's a whole process. So, pulling that forward, I think is a great idea, and thank you for bringing that up.
Fred, I'd like to know more about the economic development plan as it exists for the city.
We can actually roll it out, it's very detailed. All of these plans are rolled out, currently exist in the city's master plan, and have been since O eight. There's an actual formal document, those documents exist as well, and much of, all of them were incorporated in the two thousand and eight master plan, and it's a strategy we work relative to retention. Calls working, uh, in, in conjunction with Michigan Economic Development Corporation in Oakland County. And then the attraction efforts, we've actually stepped up in, in the last two years as the economy's coming back, involving different chambers, trying to tag along with certain trade missions with the state and the county, those things. Obviously, the general thought is the best business that we have is the one that's already here. So, let's retain those folks that are here, help them to continue to grow. On the entrepreneurial front, in the startup front, an awful lot is done with Oakland County, a lot more is going to be done with Lawrence Tech. They have just hired basically an individual who's going to be more involved in the entrepreneurial and technology transfer network and getting more market, more ideas into market. Their initial pilot group will be their students. Now, that part isn't in the master plan, that was adopted in O eight. But as we adopt the new master plan, the economic development chapter probably should be dusted off and reviewed for its compliance with new tools from the state. The attraction is one piece. Something I'm really excited about is the postmodern piece, taking advantage of our, some of the historical structures in the city. We've never used that as part of our economic development strategy. The fact that it's been inventoried and catalogued is a good beginning. That's something for us to play off. Some new clusters with the information technology. We're developing some incredible I T technology companies that are coming in. They are using the one ninety-eights and the three twenty-eight tax abatements. So, we're happy to come in and do a different level of engagement. You know, really, I, I'd still like to hear maybe, like, some comments on the inceptor fees, as well as, can we get some type of collaborative effort on the brokerage community? I'd love to have a team out. Here's what we know, is the new group that bought the Blue Cross Lucille Building, their entire strategy is about raiding existing businesses. I need to have someone down in Texas, in Boston, in New York City, Chicago, and the West Coast raiding that. Obviously, the city doesn't have the resources, and that's something the private sector does really well. So, how do we get that, the, the Southfield connection out to San Jose? How do we get that connection out to Boston and, and New York? And that's something that, you know, how, what do we do with the brokerage community that, for the most part, is still headquartered in Southfield, Tomlinson Hills? You know, how do we get those players out in those other locations to attract people?
Use the Chamber of Commerce as in all the other cities. That's an opening.
Pardon?
I said, use the Chambers of Commerce as in all those other states, in the cities, and, and the states. By mail, by, by flyers, by calls.
Well, I, I think that...
That's why, well, that's why they're all organized.
It's done by websites these days.
Well, but here's what we do know, is there are plenty of times we've seen Wayne County economic development people in our office buildings. There are there folks operating auctions.
That sounds like a, perhaps, a topic for a future meeting of the city center advisory Ms. Seymour.
Yeah, I just want to comment about this, you know, it's been a few years since I worked in the Town Center, but it just shows you what I'm about to say. The idea of raiding companies has been going on for a very long time. When Troy was developing, they were coming into the Town Center and offering rents, half of what we were paying, half, and raiding, and this went on heavily in Troy. And people took them. The city, the Town Center couldn't offer those raids. I don't know how long you've been there, Tim, but I, I remember this going on because it came into my company, and it was going on all over the complex. They do come in and raid. And Troy now, I'm sure the rents have gone up, you know, according to what, but that was a very intense, for several years, very intense effort in the Town Center. And I remember some of the shops that were there that were very nice, were not, didn't, didn't have much participation. People would leave at five o'clock and not use the shop. We had a theater there one time that closed, we had a nice restaurant, and then it became a McDonald's, and it was a cafeteria, then it became McDonald's, and everything kept, kept being downgraded because people had no place else to go at five o'clock. The other thing I want to mention, is somebody talked about neighborhoods in regards to wallmart or anything else. We don't just look at the fact that residents don't want it. When we look at a neighborhood, is it something that's going to have an adverse impact on a neighborhood? And we have benchmarks to know, when, when it's going to have an adverse effect on people's homes. If you lived in that neighborhood, and you had invested in your home, and something was going to cause you really disrupt the neighborhood and make the home worth less, you don't want your, your city to put something next door to you, and it's not about the amenities, because that's, that's not, that isn't the way we look at it. We look at the fact, we don't just say, "Well, the neighborhood's residents don't like it." That isn't the way we operate. It's not a hold up your finger and see which way the wind blows. Those were very, and there's been others, there are distinct impacts that we look at in lots of meetings with the developers, and even though the, the planning commission might say yes, sometimes I don't know why they do. But it's, it's more than just because it's a neighborhood. You, you don't want to chase your residents out of, out of the community, because they, they've made an investment here, and that, that's got to be our first obligation. This is very important. A business community is extremely important to us. But, you know, when you make too much, too many big box stores, or too many things of the, of the same type in an area, you're not doing the community a service, you're doing them a disservice. I hope that generally explains it.
Is there anyone else?
I just wanted to make the only last comment based upon, I think, Gerard, when you stated that he needed a representative from city council, Terry Crowe really serves as the liaison, so everything that's communicated with your board comes to him, and he should present it back to us. So, we're, we're working together on the same team, so we're not on different teams. So, I hope you guys understand.
And he does, sure.
We're all on the same page.
No, I, I understand that. I, I, I just thought that eliminating, I don't say eliminating, but having rather more direct communication, I even heard the planning commission refer to it as a, when I think there should be a more cohesive, uh, working relationship between the planning commission and, and, and I'll reiterate what I said with city center advisory board, with, with the planning commission as well, because by the time that they get the council to vote, those, that conversation, that dialogue, or, or, or the comments of saying, "I don't know why they passed it, or why it's here," shouldn't occur. There should be a, and I'll just keep it general and, and simple, and I'll say, we should improve and streamline our approval process, because from a development standpoint, time is money, and we can't afford it here. They shouldn't have passed it, and it shouldn't be here, especially when you're sitting on a big vacant piece of property that's not generating any revenue, and you're spending thousands of dollars to make your way through the processes of applications, and fees, and architects, and engineers, and everything else, to go through all of that, and then not have it happen doesn't bode well for developers, and developers talk, and nobody wants to lose thousands of dollars, especially in the fragile state in which a developing and leasing property is at currently. Jeremy, you had started out this, this conversation saying, "What would the agenda look like, and where would you guys start?" And we talked of, you know, touting our, our universities, and, and talked about the signage, and improving, including that scenario as well, so that we're on par with some of the other communities in being able to signage on, on different spaces of buildings. And again, we talked about improving and streamlining the process, improving our pedestrian amenities, and the O D D, and Evergreen Road, and Brownfield, and, and, and the incentives, and promoting them. I think all of these items, and we thought, Fred mentioned that, the data centers as well, all of our strong points, and I think all of these things are top agenda items, and actually are, are more of, of, of promotional package. If we can improve these items, we can put them together as a promotion, a promotional package to attract users, like, "Look, we're very progressive with our signage. We have an overlay development district, we have Brownfield, we have incentives, we have these universities, and these Fortune 500 companies, we have an overlay development district, we are a core for, for fiber optic networks, and we have data centers." And I think all of those things put together, I don't think, I don't think Mayor Lawrence will be lonely and vacuous if we're able to put together a package that is touting and, and promoting all of those things. That's what developers want, that's what developers want to hear. They want to hear about the incentives, they want to hear about reduced inceptor fees, they want to hear about the overlay development district, all of those things. If everybody is made aware of it, and we, and we promote it properly... If everybody is made aware of it and we promote it properly, I think those are some of the things that will also help the city.
Ms. Seymour?
Yeah, thank you, Ken. One of, some, couple of years ago, several years ago, we did a study on trying to speed up the process for developers, for petitioners coming to the launch and create, you know, your project. It took a several months, I don't know, but it was three or six months, and we formed a committee, council, we had some people from other, I think it was the D V A, we had finance missions, members of a lot of different groups.
Suburban lines?
Are they?
Suburban lines?
Um.
Development rate community?
Well, no, there wasn't. We just did a study within our own, people from different commissions that we have. And we looked at developers that had come in and the period of time that it took, and some of them took a long time. And the period, I don't know if it was three months, four months, or six months, but in every single case, at the end of the study, in every single case, the delays were the fault of the petitioners. Big developers know when they come in, they know, they're ready, they've got everything done, they, they're ready, and they, things generally, unless it's something that doesn't, you know, fit, fit in, they know what the process is. A lot of the smaller, not really small, but I mean, a lot of them, there were people that come in, they're not prepared. And in every case, in every single case, the delay of that period, it was, it wasn't just that we picked out certain petitioners, it was over a several month period, and there were delays, and there were, we knew how long this one took and how long that one took. And in every single case, they were not prepared, and they were not ready. Had to go back, they had to make changes, they just were not prepared. And this was a very intensive study. Terry was here and we did this. So, it isn't, you know, it isn't always us. A lot of people come in and they're just not ready, and we have to send them back and say, you didn't do this, you didn't do this. You can't, you can't sit making excuses and give everybody a pass and say, well, we didn't do this right, but we'll overlook it. You know, people come in, they're not prepared, they're not ready, they haven't done, often mid-sized and smaller petitioners.
Mr. Moss and Mr. Lance?
Yeah, I was trying to respond to this time for just a second, but an overarching kind of closure remark. I said this at the meeting that we had at the planning commission, or with the planning commission, which was about two or a week and a half ago. When we were voting on Walmart, or, you know, other issues, there was a sense when we led that discussion that the planning commission felt undervalued or underappreciated by this council. And at that Walmart meeting, nobody on council, at least at that meeting, and my feeling certainly, nobody on council said, you know, how dare the planning commission, they don't know what they're talking about, you know, they're wrong, let's get rid of them all. For us, I think we just reached a different conclusion, having all the facts presented to us. And it wasn't a close vote, it was five to one vote. So, we just reached a different conclusion. We still value their opinion, we still value, we still value, we value your opinion. I think this was a very eye-opening and very helpful discussion for all of us. We, you know, we know what we signed up for being on council, we have a hundred million different voices coming at us, and each person has their own agenda, and each person has their own expertise. And it's kind of our jobs with everything that we have to do is to filter that and make the best conclusions. So, I just want to end the meeting, or at least as we close the meeting, to let you know, this was extremely valuable to all of us. These are things that we need to hear, that we don't see every day, because, you know, we have our feet in other rooms, you know, and doing other things constantly. So, I hope this dialogue continues, and I really truly appreciate, you know, the honesty, because that's what we need to hear in order, we all have, we all have one agenda, and that's to make the city better. We wouldn't be here on council, we wouldn't, you know, be here in the development community if we didn't want the city to succeed. So, I appreciate this conversation, and I hope it leads to just more collaboration in the future.
We're going on three hours. Last comment from Mr. Lance, if something's up and we'll close.
When a small developer comes to us and is not ready, as Joan says, he is not helping. Our people don't tell them what to do. That was my concern for years. They've come, they don't know what to do, they're not told what to do. And I have proof of it, and they all called me, and I know they haven't been helped. Another thing. Well, I hate to say it, Jeremy, can you speak well? Fine. Fine. Should be a lot of baloney.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you need a motion to adjourn? I'll give you one.
Okay. Before we adjourn, I, if it wasn't important to us, we wouldn't have held this meeting and the one we held with the planning commission and the one we're holding with the councils of later and several health, maybe Monday. Speaking to the council, we really appreciate your service to the City Center Advisory Board. I think Mr. Moss says appropriately, we all have one goal, and I thank you for your time attending tonight, and the feedback. I took notes, and as did Ms. Banks, so we will follow up, and I appreciate the gratitude.
We'd like to return a thank you, because we know your work and her, and we know you've been having many meetings with many commissions and many different groups, and that's a definite positive first step. So, none of the comments tonight are personal, we all have the same goal and mind, and we all want to do what we can to better and improve our city. And so, we thank you as well.
Thank you.
This is the inside note. Jim, I'm just amazed that you lasted this long.
We're all- Twenty-hour day for me. Where, council's going to take a five-minute recess, we have communications and another item on the agenda to be executed.
Yes. Very quickly, this is the Mars site in the pool. We discussed it at the hall, and we're ready to move forward. We need a rule ten, under the concept that time is of the essence, and it's a short story, a real little bit. We know the company is capable. We have Parks and Rec people here. Ted or Bob, you want to add anything?
Item we came to you for about a month ago, you approved it, pressed about bid, you received four vendors that submitted bids. Two, we just hear we're qualified and we're taking the lowest qualified. We're familiar with the problem and the remedy.
Yes.
As we discussed it before, and we did give you permission to take this. So, is there any questions from the council?
The, just the lowest qualified bid, so we went through the, through the, our established process.
Correct.
And it was evaluated that the companies, even though they were low, that it couldn't provide what we wanted?
Yes. They just hadn't, they just never had experience with a pool the size of ours, or really, a lot of them were bidding on projects where they had no experience at all. I agree Mars setting.
We're going to need a rule ten on this, and before I ask for a motion, I would just like to suggest to Parks and Rec, this is, we have some objection to doing rule tens, and this is a project that you knew was coming back spring. So, you know, emergencies are emergencies, and that's why we have the rule tens, but I'd like to suggest to you, you know these things are coming, advance them to council prior to, or earlier, so that we don't have to do rule tens. Right, Mr. Fraser?
Yeah, the only problem, the only pushback I have with you is, the other day we did forty of them, nobody got to speed up them. So.
I don't know that I want to prolong this by too much, but I recall that this was the evaluation process. So, is it, is it accurate that we knew we were going to do this last year? Or did we just come to the conclusion, what it would come to conclusion? Because we're always looking for improvement. Is that accurate?
Yeah, realistically, we knew at the end of the pool season last year that we were going to try to bring this to council.
Okay, well, that's a valid point.
Yeah, absolutely.
With all due respect, you know, you've got a lot on this, but I'm trying to balance the agenda and concerns of the-
I think one of our problems is, we were under the assumption that we were going to be able to do this as part of that building authority project that we found out, but it was, it wasn't stated in there specifically that we could do the Mars site as part of the pool project, and then we get to come back and talk to them.
The point's well taken, it's a routine item, and we know in advance that we want to avoid the open ends.
I'm over rule ten.
The motion is supported for rule ten, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Most of the carries.
I have one question. What's the life expectancy or the expectancy of this being done? How often will we have to go out and, this is the end of the rule, do it for five years, ten years?
This should last at least ten years. We, the previous one, they say ten-year life expectancy, it was twelve years ago we had this done, so ten to twelve years, I think is a pretty safe estimation.
I move to accept the bid proposal from E M B Pool Service and Supply, La Jolla, Michigan, to the Pool Mars Site Repair Services Department.
Support, support by Mr. Fraser, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I have a, I have a question, another question. A few years ago, a couple of years ago, you're talking about building, kind of a splash pad over at the Beachwoods.
Yeah.
So, that's still on the plans, but we have no money to do it at this point in time.
You're going to take that, or you want me to?
Yeah, I mean, we have, we've definitely, you know, looked into that, but it's kind of, it's in the master plan, and we, you know, we're looking into doing wells and stuff, that was kind of pulled up, and then the money certainly was a factor.
We're looking at grant opportunities for that program, we pay for the passport grant in the next few years. Each year the money grows in the passport grant, the more people that utilize that with their license plate, there's more grant, it's helpful for communities. I think that's really one we're looking at with the passport grant, because we're going to need, we're going to need outside funding for that, for that project. I mean, it would run, you know, the ones I've seen at a size we want to do, you're easily talking five hundred thousand dollars at least.
Oh, yeah?
Oh, yeah.
I think that project we're looking at, maybe we're starting to discuss.
Yeah, it's significant.
Okay, I guess, if it's going to be that expensive, maybe prior to doing it, we ought to do a survey to find out if there are enough young people in that area to warrant spending that kind of money, because if you spend it, the reason you spend it is because they don't have to come all the way across town, or come to swimming pool, but they have, they have a way of getting some exercise and bonding and stuff. But with that kind of money, you really need a pretty good sized group of people to use it.
And I think we all agree that the actual building needs work inside as well, the beach and the arena, I mean, you need to put money inside that building.
Yeah, okay, all right. We just, question.
We're more after right now to take care of what the existing facilities we have-
And we should.
Add on.
And we should.
I think, you know, we look around and do the same thing everywhere, I mean, the thirty and forty, I think, I mean, some law.
Okay. Great, thanks. Ray? Yes, we were able to gain funding for redoing robot reconstruction.
I'm sorry, before they leave, can you please do the council an update on the Country Day? Because they're moving forward, you need to know.
Yeah, sure. Country Day came to our last Parks Recreation Board meeting with a framework, a memo of understanding effectively, that P and R Board would support the project of lighting four ball fields at Inglewood Park in exchange for primary use of Civic Center One baseball diamond. P and R Board did approve that, and as far as I know right now, Country Day is going out for Major League Baseball grants. I believe they're asking for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and that will spearhead their fundraising initiative. Their end goal is four hundred thousand. When they get to that point, we would again, we'd sit down with them and go through P and R Board again, and then to Mayor and Council for approval, as to an actual agreement, a contract, if you will, and then, you know, at that point, we'd actually begin construction. We have no timeframe on this, we just, P and R Board approved a concept of it for them to move forward, it's all dependent on, you know, funding on their end and then approval on our end.
They would light where?
They would light all four ball diamonds at Inglewood Park, so.
Which groups did it?
Pardon?
Wasn't that same thing that girls came in and said they wanted to do?
No, it was, Brother Rice, it was similar. Brother Rice ended up buying a piece of property near the airport in Troy, and actually spending about one point five million dollars, that was the number I saw, on making their own ball diamond there, so.
And Brother Rice wanted to make their home field at Inglewood, whereas what Country Day's looking at here in drinking their home field here at Civic Center Field, and then the lighted diamonds would be for our softball program.
It took down the program.
Yeah.
We look at this as a way for us to really upgrade five ball diamonds and not have a cost of anything.
Sure.
Ms. Seymour?
Country Day is from what city?
I believe Beverly Hills.
Beverly Hills.
I believe.
Okay, and how much use would they have of that ball field? Would they have sole use of it?
They wouldn't have sole use of it, but they definitely have primary use of it.
And what does that mean in terms of?
I would, what they initially are asking from us, and again, these are things that are to be hammered out.
So, do you want to have some idea for the time?
Some idea, I would say mid-March, or mid-March through mid-June, three to six thirty, seven o'clock at night, Monday through Friday, Saturdays, nine a.m. to four.
So, they'd be the primary user?
They would be, absolutely, the primary user, they wouldn't have sole use of it, but they have primary use of it.
It sounds like eighty percent, ninety percent of it.
Well, you still have June, July, August, there would still be opportunities for Southfield to utilize the field.
Tell me again, the month?
Mid-March through mid-June.
Okay.
You still have June, July, and August to work.
And what are the, what are the principal use, I mean, in our city right now, what is the heavy use of the ball diamond?
Country Day rents it every day.
Oh, they do?
Monday through Friday. Men's, our adult softball leagues play there, and Little League does utilize that field from time to time.
You're not telling me what I want to know, how much usage, I mean, would it, how much, you know, so many hours per day, so many hours per week? I don't mean Country Day, I mean everything. It sounds like Country Day is the major user now.
Now, I would say they're one of the major users of the field. They probably utilize it three hours a day. Adult softball probably uses it about two and a half hours a day, you know, and then Saturdays, I would say, you know, Little League is not out there every Saturday, but they're out there, I'd say a couple Saturdays a month utilizing that ball diamond.
And they schedule that, presumably have to put them in in advance, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I would have a suggestion, I think I made it before, but I'll repeat it again. When we had this meeting several months ago, when this first was brought up, you need to bring back data.
And learning.
On ball, ball, ball field use for the entire council. I can guarantee you, there'll be residents, taxpayers, who will come and say, how can you do this? So, we, you need to arm the council with data so that we can support what you're trying to accomplish. And lacking that, I don't think this is going to- And lacking that, uh, I don't think this is gonna go anywhere, uh, we need a level of comfort. And, and I'm sure, I know you guys got the data, so.
Yeah, if I could just add on to what kind of thing, that's the whole point, I mean, if people go in and see that Country Day was another, you know, outside city is, is major use of our new ball field, and this our new ball field, it's not gonna be a very popular thing with our residents.
Are you seeing it now?
I know that, but it's not publicized.
Yeah.
Give us some schedule, give us some details.
I just wanted to say that, um, the Parks and Recreation Board, um, met, they evaluated this, but because there was an agreement, I wanted to make sure council knew. So, this is good feedback for you, so when it comes back to council before, when it works out, you have all the data, I can see it. So, because I wanna make sure council knows.
Well, the data we're gonna have, we did, this would have to go through the P and R Board, and that'll get a big work out there.
It do, though.
Yeah, but, I mean.
When it comes back.
Just, just the idea that we would support their concept to help them get a grant for four hundred thousand.
It's already what it grew from.
Right, just that we support their concept of them trying to get four hundred thousand, because they, they would need that money and more to be able to do the, the work that we need done, so.
Yes, without.
There's, there's a large, there's a lot of, uh, room to cover between them getting permission and go after a grant for four hundred thousand, actually getting it, and then also fundraising even more than that to come back, uh, to, to, because it's costing more than four hundred dollars like those, like those.
If they don't come up with the money, you will.
Right, right.
All right, we should move on, thank you both.
Thank you.
Mr. Schreit has some good news for us, um, a good effort, um, it's not the problem, so, Mr. Schreit?
Yeah, we've been working with the Road Commission for Oakland County, uh, on Greenfield Road, which is in deplorable condition from Mount Vernon to, southbound to Eight Mile Road. Uh, we met with representatives of the Road Commission, uh, we became aware there was a possibility of one-time federal funding. Uh, we went after it, we, uh, got support from, uh, we got five letters that we delivered in two days, uh, to the folks. And, uh, basically, they decided to advocate for this, uh, there was competing communities that would also qualify, uh, but we got chased.
Mr. Schreit would like a consensus, um, to go forward with this this evening, uh, for action at the city meeting?
Uh, right, uh, the, uh, April twenty second, regular, regular, regular meeting, twenty second.
So, I'm assuming, but I will add, it's hard.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm just being there and hearing you.
And I will say yes.
And I, yeah.
I say yes.
I will, yeah, two hundred.
I've, I've hit every single one of those, though.
Okay, um, the next part of our agenda communication, um, I'm calling first Mr. Gerard Mullin, uh, I don't see him in attendance. Please let the record show that, uh, he was not here. Um, secondly, I'm calling on, uh, Pamela Jarrett Carroll. Uh, and let the record show that she's not here either this evening, um. Uh, so then, uh, Mr. Jones, the floor is yours.
Where do I go to speak?
Uh, I'm gonna go ahead and use this microphone if you'd like to have a chair this evening, um, you may sit right there, uh, make sure the green light is on.
Done.
Okay.
All right, and, um, you know the, the drill, your name and address, and any time you want to start.
Uh, my name is, uh, Brent Jones, and I'm in five thousand, Thompson. Okay, uh, starts on top of the, of key issues. Okay, the city center, uh, definitely is a visionary sign of progress, can be a motivating factor of growth and reverse of the whole of Michigan, uh, symbolically. Um, MIT, Caltech, uh, University of Washington, the M, uh, all of which campuses I have lived near once have the epicenter areas of cultural and economic growth, L T U, O C C, uh, icons for powerful development of potential, most along the same lines. Um, Southfield is a golden city and can represent a phoenix for Michigan and could set the tempo for redevelopment, and should be a leader of progress for the state of Michigan. Uh, just because the national economic ship has hit an iceberg and is slowly sinking, we in Southfield can either sink or swim. Progress of any kind is, uh, treading water to stop would be negligent or fatal. Southfield must sib of water to keep the Titanic of Michigan sailing as a symbol of hope. Okay, uh, I myself may be in, an infamous rogue with, uh, dynamic but unfocused potential, uh, but would rather be an asset than a liability. To all bear witness to my capacity to write and speak publicly, I'm willing to prove there are no such thing as enemies, just misunderstandings and mismanaging of persons as resources, or human resources. I can make myself available for a stronger positive force than not, especially to the degree of grant writing or other proposed drafting of social, socioeconomic projects, uh, so I'd like to add, I was really trying to write a grant for Southfield Public Library at the, uh, understood incident, and I'm enjoying studying at Lawrence Tech library without any problems. Uh, and getting back to the, um, tempo of the previous points, any sign of progress is better than none, and I support the city center as it should be a magnet for future growth. Um, a model which could be Pasadena, if any, in Pasadena, I think that Southfield could really parallel things that have happened in Pasadena as far as demographics, the, uh, the geography of the area, uh, you know, Caltech being parallel to, and similar to Lawrence Tech, um, and, uh, and, uh, G being similar to, um, J P L. I mean, there's a lot of parallels, the, the, um, economic, or the, uh, cultural diversity, African Americans, a lot of Asian roles, and even European Americans all working together to develop that area, Pasadena and Southfield, a lot of parallels. Just, you want to do some research on how to strengthen in Southfield. Also think the Walmart project should be put back on the table, uh, and it could bring momentum that Walmart possesses to Southfield. And Walmart having come to Southfield would be more gain support for Southfield in such activities as the city center. Can a proposal be drafted to bring Walmart maybe to Northland, or even compromise back with previous location for the, uh, big picture? And that is a victory for the long run and the prospective future. Uh, Southfield P D sets a platform for stable and secure business safety and development as they provide premium safety for growth and secure assets. I think that there could also be a saleability, uh, when people go out and propagate potential business for Southfield. And in fact with this, I was walking down the street, and I had my guitar with me, and they checked it to make sure that I had a weapon, and they saw that I had my normal project guitars, really good guitar, but that's a sign they're doing what it takes to make sure that there's no violence in Southfield, and that's also good for residents and business. Um, Southfield should put itself in position to probably develop the youth, uh, youth pool, human resources as employment potential from Detroit by providing safe employment conditions and attracting attractive basis for developing and expanding corporations looking for soil to take root. Uh, and in addition, have any foreign business developers being courted for fresh business growth, um, powerful countries with entrepreneurs looking for new venues to compete, such as China, Japan, and Russia, especially in the restaurant, automotive, and academic sectors. I E, uh, language schools to pull in wealthy, uh, international student bodies to attract, uh, to local real estate, um, interest. Uh, you're looking for people to obtain real estate, uh, and in, it's other countries, especially. Okay, well, I'm gonna close by saying that any project, such as what Ted Davis suggested, with programs that keep youth active, should be supported at all costs. These projects show Southfield's integrity and as an agent of salvation and productivity for youth in Southfield and surrounding communities, strengthening the core honorability of the community.
Council, is there anything else to come before, um, the assembly this evening?
I don't know. You know, I have just gone, um, maybe we can, Lord, we haven't already, listening to the discussion, uh, that we just had previously, and Lawrence Tech and all that they're doing with the students, I wonder have we, and I'm not sure what Lawrence Tech is doing, in terms of, um, expanding or adding a hockey team, that they have a hockey team using our, they, uh, they. And, and their home, their home office is out. Okay, I didn't know that was, all right, we're good. Okay, my question, um, it came up creating, um, corridor development authority in the D V A, I mean, in the city center. I would like for that to be brought forward, and what is the advantages, and will that be a catalyst to propel the development of that? And what's the difference, because we, there was a discussion about, um, switching the D V A to the city center and making Northland a central shopping authority district? But I, I want, that is something I think that could really add value to, um, to that process.
All right, um, is this the floor on council ground, could we refer that to the administration?
Yeah.
We, I think we need to investigate anything that's going to help us realize our goal. So, at least getting, saying, no, we don't do that, I think we closed the door, but it should be open.
I would agree, I just wanted to know, and also, um, we need to bring back, um, and, uh, discuss the adoption, if that's the right word, of the city center plan, um, so that we, it has a marketing tool.
Yeah.
Uh, so I'll refer that to the, um, administration.
Getting back to us talking to student government bodies, you remember that night that the, um, the, uh, university school came, and the meeting kind of fell apart, so we just had an open dialogue with them, it was an amazing night. And it hasn't repeated, we say we're gonna invite them back again. And while we're building, bringing our, um, committees back, I would love to just have, um, the council, the mayor, and the, and the clerk, and, and the treasurer, talk to our young people, and have the school district send a hundred kids, that, you know, their student government bodies or whatever, and have us talk to them about their city and, and what are their concerns, because we always, I know they're at the high school level, but Monday they're gonna college, we want them to come back, this is their city, um, and if we, we can limit it to seniors, um, the high school. And, um, I, that night was to me just so, um, it was such a compliment to Southfield and the students that were in our school. And we haven't, and it happened as a fluke, we didn't plan it, and it turned out great.
Um, for us to get, can I see us a meeting, 'cause I have two emails that we're responding to.
You're doing that just to, you know, to limit it, you might forget, I know.
Uh, is there anything else? Um, we will schedule a fine discussion.
What's the response?
That was a say.
What's the response?
She just made a comment.
Oh.
And you just passed it over?
I'm first gonna initiate that, I guess, is my, um.
I don't have a problem doing it, but I have to have the blessing of the council they wanna do.
Would this be in, in lieu of one of our regular meetings?
I, I put it out there, it happened on a day, I think we didn't have a, a quorum or something.
I would imagine.
And, and we.
It's, uh, three forty, just started, yeah.
I always just wanna make sure that the private schools and charter schools aren't included. Okay.
Um, well, something needs to take ownership of it.
Well, I don't wanna say what the mayor doing unfortunately, I don't want, I want the council to want to.
I think it's a, first line.
Student dialogue.
I think it's a final, yeah, um, yeah, something's gotta take ownership of it.
And I, I do wanna say that the chief had his women's safety, girl safety, and he said it was, uh, amazing, um, response to the parents in the room, because what he was teaching the young girls applied to women's period, and the concept that women in a threatened situation can stop them, and women need to know if someone's being violent with you, you need to be violent back and protect yourself. And he said it was a wonderful response, and I think that is such a positive for our community, that we're being proactive with our girls. And, um, it was just something I was going to say that, uh, it's great feedback.
Um, so I have time.
Well, I, can I interject for a second, though?
Yeah.
Well, that's something that we, uh, Ms. Jordan and I had discussed, and we had a preliminary Economic Development Committee meeting, so that's something that we were probably already gonna put on the agenda anyway, so that's something you want us to tackle and direct talk.
Well, we have business out there that's been through, I mean, it went through.
That was L E D and electronic signs.
No, no, there was a whole load of pieces to it, that went through the state plan and through, um, um, legislative plan, or neighborhood service, and. We met on it.
Signage, signage?
In the fall. Um, and I, I know it went through the.
Heavy legislation.
Two groups of three, one little.
That was on the electronic sign, that we went through that and all of the different frameworks and standards.
Yeah, it was more than the gas station, so we.
Absolutely.
Right, we need to bring, keep moving this, and then it looks like we're gonna have to have another discussion about multiple signs.
When we had that focus group, the council, when we were working on electronic signs, council and we created, meet with some of the stakeholders and find out what the, Jim Jones was in there and a few others, and that was one of the issues they raised, was that, you know, what can we do with wall signs in terms of, you know, number size, so that is like a third component of it.
We talked about it, we did talk about it, but, but, but we didn't resolve anything.
No, we haven't resolved it, so we need, we need to do that, and honestly, um, uh, you know, we're, we're hearing it from a key stakeholders, uh, whether it's Northland or, um, the developers that are represented here tonight. Um, and I know if, if, um, I, I really, as I mentioned, I really like astronomy, but I tell you something.
Finance is, uh, challenging.
You just know it's there, um, and it'd be a shame to lose, uh, the food there, it's just a perk. Um, and if you think dinner's a little expensive, but I think the lunch is, is great. Uh, we need to, you know, we need to let people know it's there, and the only time they have outside, it's a little tiny bar, you know, it's on, uh, on a sidewalk.
We need something on the roadway.
Yeah.
Well, Morton's had the same issue, no one was.
It's something that they're over the door, Morton's.
Yeah, but it's, exactly, mayor.
But it's over there.
And it's, and we lost Morton.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, here, here we have the Epicurean group that's invested with a new restaurant, um, and we don't owe it.
Yeah, they can survive with this, given, though, in that building.
You know, very smart of them, that they noticed that, um, I was talking to Eric, uh, that's sort of the regional manager, whatever, uh, which, they noticed a lot of Jimmy Johns and Little Seaters coming in at lunch, so they developed a catering menu for the officers, which was thinking out of the box, and, um, things, doing something price, uh, you know, price, what's the price point, and also that they deliver, um, so I thought that was very clever, um.
Isn't there a seating capacity about sixty-five or something? 'Cause it's not very big, I was gonna have a, one of my.
They do have a.
The nonprofits, we were gonna have, uh, uh, fundraiser lunches there, but they didn't have enough seats, so.
I think that the, you oughta talk to them.
Well, I did, I mean, we already had it.
Oh, okay.
With Troy.
Maybe, uh, well, they don't, you know, they're not, they don't do lunch on Saturdays, um, maybe they do a catered thing on Saturdays, if they have the numbers, yes.
Okay, so on signage, uh, I'm thinking that would be better with staff, because Fred, we've got research going already.
I would recommend.
Oh, I understand that, the stakeholders, but I, as to the committee that, that.
Move forward what's ready to go, this is a whole other stage that deals with the, the buildings and amassing, and what we were hearing, what Shelley's heard repeatedly from the private sector folks on signage on those buildings.
If the question is, how to handle it, how to, how to, how to study it, and what are the responsibilities you should fall?
Move your first part forward, and I, I think would probably be a, a, a study session with council and have L S L planning come in with our planning and zoning staff and present.
That's what I'm suggesting, as opposed to the committee, have they get involved as well.
Yep.
Here, they have enough other, enough other issues, and this, this one's technical.
Yep.
So, seems like we're duplicating, uh, efforts.
Our, our, our staff will tell you that you could do all of this right now, and if, if that's the case, then why hasn't the private sector been able to master it? and if, if that's the case, then why hasn't the private sector been able to master it?
Here's one of the concerns that I have, we're charging center, we get to change the center, however, we have to fight the staff, because when they come back, you know, I really don't wanna see the video of Eight Mile Road anymore. This is what you're gonna get if, if you change the sign or this. If we're gonna be in, in up-to-date times, we need to put that slide away.
That'd be a happy new year.
Yes, right, but it's, we can't have, we can't have this kind of sign, we can't have that kind of sign.
No, none of us want Eight Mile.
That's right, but that's, that's a threat that always comes back. You can change the sign or this, this is what you're gonna get. But other communities do have signs, and flexible, they're flexible in with signs, and it doesn't look like anymore.
So, I agree, so that's fair, but I think, I think you've got to put it in council on, we need to look at this.
Correct? Yes, but I really hope that we meet with the stakeholders before we bring it to council, so we have a good sense, because it doesn't make it, we don't, I don't, you may know, I don't own a building. I drive through other cities, and I see it's done very professional. I think we can, and I know for a fact we have room for improvement, to be more inclusive of our signage. And you know, think about what they just said, it was embarrassing what they had to go through for Microsoft. And we'll, you'll have a sign, but we're doing a good job, we're enforcing the ordinance. And so, it's, it's, again, that relationship of, we don't care what it costs you, we're Southfield, just do what we say. But we, you know, the council has to have a policy, they have to have rules, they have to have ordinances.
Well, we're not coming to C O W with a stakeholder in place.
Okay, well.
The, the question will probably be, who, who guides that stakeholder improvement? Our staff or a private consultant? My recommendation is the private consultant, so I can tell you right now, our staff is, is gonna be the obstacle. They fought us, they didn't want us to have this discussion with them, but we showed them the preliminary research, they weren't very happy.
But I can also say, I don't fault the sign folks that go out and enforce the sign or this. Our problem, because all they're doing is doing what we don't do, so we gotta tell them to do something different.
And, and we're hearing from key business stakeholders that they're losing business or people are passing because they want better signage, more visible signage.
And I, I also, cause I think he, Mr. Gordon had already started, but that ninety-day or less process, cause you know, what, what I see, if the council approves the development across the street, and we put all those incentives in there, how can we create an expedited process? Cause everything that they're gonna be coming with is something that's zoned and is already what you've approved. So how can we get an expedited process for, to, to really put a catalyst? I will tell you, if you tell a developer, if you come here and build this, and we have an expedited process of ninety days or less, they'll give a sign, because the council has given their block.
That's what they will need, they're supposed to do, they're supposed to shrink that down so that it, it has a easier path to improve.
And we have to make sure that we schedule.
Right.
It's scheduling on our end. Anything else? And this meeting is.